Thanks, everybody. It's running rampant, the fear that's in your veins. No place was high and dry the day that the waters came. And that dark shadow of trouble draped across our door.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kobar.
Yeah.
Councilmember Maal.
Here.
Councilmember Koreshi.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Terrific. All right, I don't think we have any changes to our agenda this evening. Looking to future council meetings, on next Wednesday, May 17th, we meet here for our regular city council meeting. We will have a voting session. It will be the second reading of our FY 2018 tax rate, stormwater, and budget. So those are all second readings next week. We'll have a resolution establishing policy objectives associated with the fiscal year 2018 budget, and we'll talk about those a little bit later today as well. And then we have a tentative resolution providing for appointments to committees, and a work session of a presentation of the New Hampshire Avenue Bike Ways Concept Plan. Councilmember, next, we have a New Hampshire Avenue Bike Ways Plan coming up next week. And then on Friday, May 19th, we have another community coffee between 8:00 and 9:00 a.m. with myself and councilmember Maal will be there at Los Pollos Restaurant at 6842 New Hampshire Avenue. And then, please remember, on Saturday, May 20th, is Celebrate Tacoma Festival from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. On Wednesday, May 24th, we're back here for our regular meeting at 7:30. For the record, we will have a Gun Violence Awareness Day proclamation. Gun Violence Awareness Day is June 2nd, and we're all encouraged to wear orange in honor of that day. Then we will have a resolution renaming Columbus Day as Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'll just say this is on our agenda because each time Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day rolls around, I get many emails from residents saying, "Could we change that?" But usually it's right either on the day or right before it. So this time, I thank the city clerk for getting it on our rolling agenda in time, way before October. Also, that evening, we'll have a first reading ordinance authorizing the FY 2017 Budget Amendment Number Three, and a single reading ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a contract agreement with Cheer for the Lunch and Learn Summer Program. And then, we will not have a meeting on Wednesday, May 31st. That is the final Wednesday in May, and we will not have a meeting that day. And then that'll take us to June. All right. Now, before we turn to public comments, this evening, we had a wonderful reception for our committees and boards that we have in Tacoma Park. I just want to say thank you to everyone who serves on a committee or board. We have a number of them in our community, and they really help us as a city council and our staff really function and work well. We have so much expertise in this community, and it was wonderful for the last hour to get to know people I hadn't met before and talk to them about the different committees they are on. Helen Keller said, "Alone, we can do so little; together, we can do so much." And I think that's what we do really well here in Tacoma Park. I just want to recognize, I think most people are still out enjoying the festivities, but if you are on a committee, I ask you to stand. We have the Arts and Humanities Commission, Board of Elections, Commemoration Commissions, our Commission on Landlord Tenant Affairs, Committee on the Environment, the Emergency Preparedness Committee, the Ethics Commission, Facade Advisory Board, the Grants Review Committee, the Noise Control Board, the Nuclear Free Tacoma Park Committee, the Recreation Committee, the Safe Roadways Committee, the Tacoma Junction Community Consultation Process Advisory Committee, the winner for the longest name, the Tree Commission, the Police Employees' Retirement Plan Committee, and the Police Chief's Advisory Board. Thank you all. Thank you very much for all your hours, your skill, and your attention to the issues in our city. Okay, now we'll turn to public comments. We'll first do public comments on voting items. Our first voting item this evening is the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2018 tax rate. If you have any public comments on that, please come to the podium. Okay, our next voting item is the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2018 Stormwater Management Budget. Any public comments on that? The next voting item is the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2018 budget. Any comments on that? Then we have the second reading of our Charter Amendment Resolution, Nominations and Elections. This is our election synchronization resolution. Does anyone have any public comments on that? No? And then, our final voting item this evening is the consent agenda. In the consent agenda, we have a single reading ordinance approving the purchase of police radios, a resolution providing for the appointment to the Emergency Preparedness Committee, and appointments to the facade advisory board. Any public comments on the consent agenda? No? All right. Then we will go to general public comments. I know there was one resident who requested extra time. Ms. Carron, do you want to go first? You're on now, Rachel. Okay.
I'm Rachel Hardwick. I'm president of the board for the Co-op. I'm here today to speak for the Co-op and to share our disappointment in the failure to reach an agreement with NDC for expansion. I'm also here with several other board members who will also help explain our disappointment and our concerns. Marilyn Berger, our senior manager, has been the Co-op spokesperson these past several years because she has had the primary responsibility for Co-op expansion. I want to publicly acknowledge and thank Marilyn for all of her hard work, all the hard work she has put into this undertaking. She has worked long hours in very difficult negotiations, and we sincerely thank her. Tonight, Marilyn and the board thought that it would be helpful if Co-op board members expressed our views about where things stand today and how we got here. Of course, Marilyn is here tonight and available to answer any questions you might have. The Co-op board is elected by Co-op members, and we serve a term of three years each. Our function is to provide overall direction for the Co-op by establishing goals and broad policy guidelines, and by monitoring management's performance. We believe the board's role as representative of our membership is part of what makes the Co-op different from other grocery stores. We are truly a community-based organization. As board members, we are committed to promoting the viability of community-based organizations like the Co-op. While Co-op management has been working hard on negotiations with NDC, they have routinely briefed the board and asked for our input. Last week, management updated us on where things stood and asked us to decide how to proceed. After careful consideration, we felt there was no choice but to end negotiations on expansion with NDC. It was a decision we reached with great regret. We had hoped over these past two years, two and a half years, that the Co-op would be able to expand. When NDC was selected as the developer, we had hoped and believed we would be able to reach an agreement with them, and we invested nearly $200,000 in uncountable staff and board hours in trying to reach an agreement, and we are greatly disappointed that that has not been successful. You'll be hearing from other board members more specifics about why we made the decision, but to succinctly sum up the reason, the Co-op cannot afford a rent of $45 per square foot for the expansion space. While the negotiations on expansion have ended, we remain very much concerned about the development project accommodating the Co-op's need to remain viable in its current space. We thank you, again, for including in your agreement with NDC the requirement that they accommodate the Co-op's needs for loading, parking, and continuity of service. We recognize that these are challenging issues as well, and are committed to working with NDC and the city to come up with solutions. Again, thank you for your support of the Co-op.
Good evening. Robert Anderson, Woodland Avenue, Vice President of the Co-op and a member of the negotiating team. One of the primary reasons Co-op board members are speaking today in such an organized fashion is to reiterate how disappointed we are that we were not able to reach an agreement with NDC. I know this is a sentiment shared with the council and NDC. We tried hard to reach such an agreement, and we're hopeful it could be done. No one is more disappointed than we. As you know, we started to meet earnestly with NDC soon after the city chose them for the project, and in fact, the city chose them for the project based upon our recommendation. We have worked diligently and in good faith with NDC to reach an agreement and have, as Rachel said, spent more than $200,000 on the development process. In May of last year, when NDC proposed an LOI that offered a rent of $28.50 per square foot, we were optimistic we could reach an agreement. We subsequently proposed an expanded LOI that we hoped could be quickly converted to a final executable lease if we could reach agreement on rent and other financial issues. Unfortunately, in the latest round of negotiations, the original rental proposal of $28.50 per square foot was no longer on the table. When the new proposal of $45 per square foot was put forward 11 months after the $28.50, we were frankly dismayed but remained determined to negotiate a reasonable solution. After the $45 rent figure was put forward, there were two more difficult negotiating sessions before we came to the reluctant conclusion that there was no basis for an agreement. Our financial consultants confirmed that this was significantly beyond what the Co-op could afford irrespective of analysis by outside parties with limited knowledge. It simply would not be a prudent business decision to agree to this rent. The reason that the Co-op is in good financial health is that we had been judicious and pragmatic in the exercise of our fiduciary responsibilities. Again, we were quite disappointed that we could not come to an agreement. From the Co-op's perspective, a viable economic agreement was simply not attainable, perhaps due to the economic needs of the developer. As shall be described by others, the primary reason the Co-op wanted to expand was to provide better service and a wider range of choices and price points for our community. We simply could not accomplish this goal with the proposed rent. Now, as Rachel said, our attention turns to the requirements the council mandated in its LDA agreement with NDC to provide for the basic operational needs of the Co-op. We have faith that the city and NDC, working together with the Co-op, will find a way to do that. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Adam Frank. I'm at 408 Boyd Avenue, currently a member of the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Food Co-op Board of Representatives. I wanted to address some of the points that NDC raised in its letter that it wrote to the Co-op and copied to the council members. In that letter, NDC stated that it would have preferred to build brand-new space for the Co-op. However, if you recall, after several members of the Tacoma Park City Council stated publicly that they would take the Co-op's needs for delivery truck access, sufficient parking, and business continuity even more seriously if TPSS knew where it was going to be in a few years, the owners of the Turner Building signed a 20-year lease with the Co-op in January 2015. We've never wavered from that legal commitment. NDC's response to the RFP back in 2014 and subsequent diagrams reflected our continued occupancy of our current site with expansion into the junction project to our west. While the Co-op understood that it would have to pay substantially higher rent to expand into a new space, we believed we could afford to do so because we would continue to be able to take advantage of the far lower rate in our current space. This was clearly explained, and negotiations moved on to the co-joining option, which would allow the Co-op to remain in our existing space and add additional space into the new construction. NDC outlines the challenges of making the co-join option work. We tried our best to meet that challenge, offering an LOI proposal that addressed many of the challenges, including our offer to handle zoning, an architect, an engineer, and costs. The exclusives we proposed were consistent with NDC's assurances last year that they wouldn't leave space to a tenant that sells similar goods as the tenant's product offerings, for example, not leasing to a liquor store. We also explained that the Co-op's liquor license prohibits us from having certain educational facilities near our store, and agreed to withdraw other exclusives we proposed. We thought we were making progress until NDC said the rent would need to be $45 per square foot. We were generally surprised and knew we could not afford it, but we continued to negotiate in order to fully understand the proposal and to explore if there were alternatives. We offered to pay for all of our own interior build-out costs. We reiterated, reiterated that we would only need unloading space for 65-foot trucks, as was specifically stated in our January 2017 LOI and as early as July 2015. We offered to pay NDC a significant lease termination fee if the Co-op needed to terminate the lease because the lay-by area didn't work. Unfortunately, NDC said it could not reduce the rent below $45 a square foot. We are not at all happy with the outcome, but we are satisfied that we gave it our best.
Hi, my name is Melissa Schlesguth. I live at 7521 Blair. That is actually in Silver Spring. I used to be a Tacoma Park resident and was actually drawn here because of the cooperative. And I'm the board secretary and decided to join the board because it is such a fantastic community resource, and I wanted to support it. So I wanted to clarify why the Co-op wanted to expand in the first place, because I believe this is relevant to explain how did we get to this point that we weren't able to agree on the lease terms? And I think that perhaps NDC's negotiation may have been based on a misunderstanding of our motivations. So as you may know, we're owned by about 10,000 shareholding members, many probably the overwhelming majority in Tacoma Park, and concern for community is a core business principle, as it is for thousands of Co-op's worldwide. We're not a traditional business. Our motivation isn't simply to maximize profits. So we're really proud of how the Co-op has served our community and our members. In recent years, we've expanded our offerings, including a lot of multi-ethnic foods, added beer and wine, based on a city survey that told us Tacoma Park residents really wanted this, and improved our competitiveness with other grocery stores. While doing so, we've remained profitable and gained recognition from the National Co-op Association. We're proud to be one of the city's largest employers, with diverse employees from dozens of countries, over 20 different countries worldwide. Of course, we recognize there's always room for improvement, and we're always seeking to do more for our members and our community. Now, a few years ago, the Co-op decided to explore the possibility of expansion driven by the goal of serving our members and our community. Our motivation was not simply to maximize profits. Consultants confirmed that we would be able to expand our offerings and improve our pricing with an expansion. We decided to proceed. So now reflecting on our negotiations with NDC, it's important to understand our motivations and our goals. NDC, in its letter to the city, stated, "Our assumption has always been that by more than doubling your existing selling space, that your profits, already well above industry standards, would increase by an even greater factor." Again, that was not the purpose of our expansion, solely to increase profits. It's been to improve service to members in the community. We're not interested in expansion if it would make it difficult to be competitive, financially unsustainable, and would compromise our service. The idea that we could afford to pay high rent because we'd be more profitable is simply not consistent with why we wanted to expand. Rent of 45 square feet would consume those profits anyway. So a rent of $45 a square foot is not consistent with our expansion reasons and would lead us to raise prices or compromise service. That's not the best thing for our community or members, and it's not something we can agree to do. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Susan Cho, and I live on Manor Circle. It's just a, excuse me, a block away from the Tacoma Junction. My community of 16 people has nine Co-op memberships between us, and I joined the board in December. We board members have been focused on the specific needs of the Co-op, such as the safety of our customers, staff, and delivery people. We need to ensure that our customers can reach the store safely and that our delivery people can unload our goods amidst the increased traffic. But we're also interested in the well-being of the other businesses in the junction. We all will be in the same boat and will rise or fall together. All of us will rely on well-designed access and parking to operate profitably. My community mates and I walk or bike past the junction every day. We're keenly aware of how many cars, buses, trucks, fire trucks, bikers, and pedestrians, including schoolchildren, maneuver around one another. We currently have two crossing guards directing traffic twice a day, five days a week during the school year. Whatever development plan is proposed should include a careful examination of the increased traffic, including the use of a lay-by by all businesses in the junction and possibly Wamata or ride-on buses. We rely on the concerted efforts of NDC and the wisdom of the council to safeguard us all. On a personal note, not in my capacity as a board member, I'd like to say that my household of 16 people is extremely disappointed that NDC abruptly changed the rent from $28.50 to $45 without having any additional concerns that might explain such a change. We cannot see how a business could pay such a rent while serving the community in the way the Co-op is determined to do, with the needs of the community as its sole concern. However, we're very grateful for the projections the council wrote into the agreement with NDC, and we look forward to seeing how the Co-op's needs are accommodated. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Fred Feinstein, and I too am a board member of the Co-op. I'm on the board because the Co-op is, like many of you, our go-to grocery store and has been since it opened. I figured it was my turn to pitch in and contribute what I could to the community-based grocery that we love so much. But as you well know, I've also been an active participant in efforts to develop the junction long before I became a board member. long before I became a board member. I've attended almost all the city council meetings when the injunction was on the agenda since the RFP issued more than two years ago. I've been concerned because the junction is a central part of my neighborhood and also because shopping at the Food Co-op is something that I highly value. I also joined the Co-op board to see if there was a way I could help the Co-op's expansion's efforts from the inside. I had followed as closely as possible the negotiations between the Co-op and NDC, but thought maybe I was missing something, and being on the board would give me a better insight into the negotiations. Before I was on the board, it seemed the Co-op was trying hard to reach a deal with the NDC for expansion. They seemed to have a good team in charge of the negotiations, and the positions they were taking made sense. But progress seemed slow, and I wondered why, frankly. I'm here to tell you that after serving on the Co-op board for several months now and seeing the negotiation process from the inside, my view has not changed. The Co-op has tried hard to reach an agreement with NDC. They have put forth responsible positions. They've been flexible. They've engaged in the give-and-take of negotiations. They've made concessions. And now, as you have heard, the Co-op is extremely disappointed that negotiations have come to an end. In their recent letter to the Co-op that was copied to the council that's been referred to, NDC makes several claims about Co-op positions in negotiations. You've heard from other board members tonight of the Co-op's views of some of those issues, which are quite different than what NDC asserts in its letter. One additional point that illustrates what I'm saying is, NDC asserts the Co-op in this letter asked for a provision to allow the Co-op to walk away from the lease if expansion was not generating sufficient profits. In fact, the Co-op did ask for guaranteed, did not, excuse me, ask for guaranteed profitability. Rather, it asked for a termination right with payment to NDC if the lay-by didn't work or if there was problems with state highway and so forth. We have answered other claims in the letter tonight and have also sent the council a letter explaining the Co-op position quite differently than it was described by NDC. Negotiations are often not easy, but from what I have now seen from both the outside and the inside, the Co-op has put together a skilled, hard-working team that tried its best to reach an agreement. It did not negotiate in public.
No, thank you, Mr. Feinstein.
It negotiated directly, and we're very disappointed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Curran, would you like to go now?
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. I think it was helpful to hear from the Co-op. I really appreciate this opportunity.
Ms. Curran, could you just mention your name and?
Yeah, my name is Diane Curran. I live on Montgomery Avenue. I appreciate this opportunity to talk with you tonight and to share my view of the effect of the recent collapse of negotiations on the likelihood of successful development of Tacoma Junction. My views are shared by the other city residents who signed the letter that I sent you yesterday. I want to start by acknowledging the hard work by the city council, the city council staff, the mayor, NDC, and the Co-op. This has been a long road. A lot of hard work went into this, and it's clearly been a difficult process. I also want to remind us all of the four, I think there's four fundamental goals, principles that we all share. One is the city-owned property at Tacoma Junction is at the very center of the city and is a potential important economic hub for the city. It's at one of our busiest intersections. Second, the city is very fortunate to have a successful grocery store at that junction. It's walkable, and it's an important amenity for the community. Three, the Co-op is constricted in its space. What is it, a 1960s, 1950s grocery store? It limits the range and the price range of merchandise it can offer. That could be alleviated by expanding the Co-op. And then fourth, the high volume of traffic, the pedestrian safety problems at the junction have been with us for a long time, and they only get worse. Tacoma Park residents, and I know the council, want to see the junction developed in a way that supports these four goals, and they also want to move ahead quickly and get the job done. But I think it's important at this junction to pause and see that the success of any development plan for the junction has to be measured against those civic goals for the city and that NDC's goals reasonably, very reasonably, are different. NDC needs to make a reasonable return on its investment. And what we've seen over the past year culminating in the collapse of these negotiations is all these events point to the inescapable conclusion that the current development project is simply not tenable because the city's civic goals and NDC's normal business goals are not compatible. In our view, the bell has rung three times on this project. The first time was after the city's original agreement provided for a loading dock. This was the agreement with NDC. NDC said that it couldn't afford to accommodate the Co-op with a loading dock. It would have to use a lay-by, a narrow driveway at the front of the city-owned property. Second bell was when, I think it was late in this past year, NDC changed the original plan to have the Co-op expand from its current site into the new city property and said the Co-op needs to move on to the city property, showing that NDC needs the rental income from the entire business, not just the expanded portion of the store. And finally, of course, the most recent development was the raised proposed rent for the Co-op. While NDC says the $45 a square foot rent that it's asking is simply responsive to the Co-op's demands for expensive concessions, most of what the Co-op is asking for consists of things that all agree are necessary to its survival: adequate unloading capacity and parking for workers and customers. It's clear now that NDC cannot afford to accommodate the Co-op on terms that would permit the expansion of the Co-op or even an adequate grocery unloading space for the existing store. The acrimony that both the Co-op and NDC have suffered in the negotiation process is attributable, in our view, to the fact that both parties were doing their best to negotiate for success in an untenable situation. We appreciate the time and resources that the city council, the Co-op, and NDC have put into this development process so far, but it is time to read the writing on the wall and move on with a new process. We believe there's still a way to develop the parcel that will serve the community in wonderful ways. We envision a development that allows for Co-op expansion so the Co-op can better serve the community, some small storefronts and facilities like Blessed Coffee and the Ability Project, accessible parking and green community space, along with safer traffic patterns and pedestrian protections. It is unfair to NDC, the Co-op, and the residents of the city to drag out the current process when all signs point so clearly to the need to move on. Thank you very much.
I'm Susan Schreiber. I live on Willow Avenue and lived on Maple Avenue before that and on Sherman Avenue before that, as many of you in the room have done. I've had a long-term commitment to Tacoma Park and love living in this community. And when I originally thought about speaking was before we heard about the rent increase. It was to say a few words about my experience and perspective on the community advisory meetings in March and April, because I know that there's going to be a presentation later tonight, and I, unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to stay for it. I'm going to watch it from home as a babysitter. But I wanted to say a bit about it, and of course, things I think really have changed. And I have something, I guess what I want to say is that the community advisory meetings, the one that I attended, which was about facades, I found a distraction from the real issues of the development. How is it going to serve the community? How does it reflect the community's values? We were kind of narrowly forced into a tunnel where we had to choose from a lot of pretty pictures. And as I was going out around the room and expressing, you know, raising some concerns and asking questions and talking about, asking about traffic and parking, I found that other people around me also said, "Yeah, actually, these are the things that we really care about." And when I went later on to file my online survey, and I had been at one of the community meetings, so I knew that you could file the survey without completing the whole thing, but that didn't turn out to be the case. Instead, it was just like choosing the red or green stickers. You had to go through that process. And I found it superficial and disappointing. And so I want to say, I know we're going to have a presentation on it later, and I hope that all of you will sit, take a step back because it's easy to get sucked in, and take a step back and really not fall into business as usual, because I think we are in a very different place and at a turning point right now in terms of what the city lot might be and where we might go with it as a community that really reflects the community's needs and values. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening?
Good evening, City Council. Tony Camilli, I live on Tulip Avenue. I didn't come here tonight with the intention of addressing you, but I think a couple things need to be said regarding the junction development process. First of all, I want to thank you for your immense patience, cooperation, and really open-mindedness throughout the process. I think that you have gone above and beyond what was really required to make, get the parties together to try and work out their differences and to get to where they are today. It's unfortunate that they did not, were not able to work out those differences, but, you know, it is what it is, as we say. But I did want to point out that the Co-op is here talking tonight about how they were unable to reach agreement with the developer, and they're telling you their tales of woe of the problems with reaching that development. And, you know, it is unfortunate where we've gotten to this stage, but let's not forget that they had, throughout this entire process, the Co-op was given a very special status to the extent that they have protections built in a development agreement that really most, you know, most government bodies, or I would say the majority, a large majority of government bodies, would never do for a private organization and shouldn't do for a private organization, frankly, because it is unfair to other entities that want to compete for business in communities like this. The Co-op talked about a lot tonight about its concern for community, and it's not just interested in maximizing profits, and really that's what this was about from NDC from the get-go. And I just have to say, I tend to disagree. I think that NDC has been a very willing partner in what I've seen. Now, I haven't sat in the negotiations, so I can't speak firsthand, but from what I've seen as an outsider, I see an organization that has been very upright, professional, and has done, really bent over backwards to try and make this project work. And I just implore you as the council to keep moving the project forward and to not turn back the clock and do not, please do not, try and restart this RFP process from where we were how many years ago. Certainly, I think there are some people in the community that would argue that that's what the Co-op wants right now. They want to blow up the process and restart it. I would just implore you for, you know, for the many people in Tacoma Park that want to see the junction become something more than it is now, please don't roll back that clock and start again, because it would be a waste of a lot of time and a lot of resources. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening?
Two. I come here as a founder of Parents with Special Needs Adults and also a friend of a woman who is a member of her group, who is sadly, very sadly, it breaks my heart, has to move out of this city. She's a black, great black American woman. She is the bravest person. She has a daughter who's severely disabled. Why does she have to move out of this damn city? I'm sorry. To move to Hyattsville. Why can't she remain to live in here? It really, it hurts me. I'm posted, it says here, one of your recommended council action things is racial equity and a level community for all, which she touches me both ways. She has a severely disabled daughter and a great black family, hardworking. Why can't she and families like her stay in this city? And I'm concerned, the five black families in my neighborhood, my group, have all been here over 40 years. I've been here 30 years. The white people have come and gone, and the black people have been the anchor of our community. And I'm concerned, none of them are millionaires, and I'm concerned for them too about this hike in property taxes. It really bothers me. It's hard for me, too. My house was assessed for $70,000 in 1985, and 2018 it will be assessed at $409,400. My wages did not go up that much. I'm sorry. I know you're probably using it to buy good things, but please, please. I mean, my home is less than 1,000 square feet. It's one of the few ones that haven't been bought by developers in Baintum McMansions. And anyways, I just wanted to please take this into consideration, all these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chui. And I hope you actually stay for our tax conversation because we're reducing the taxes this year.
Good.
So, thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. Very briefly, my name is Neil Cohen on Columbia Avenue. I just want to associate myself with Mr. Camilli's comments and commend the council, the mayor, and city staff for the incredible amount of hard work that's been put into this process. It's been years now that we're coming here. The developer that was chosen for the Tacoma Junction redevelopment, NDC, I think any reasonable observer can observe that they have really gone above and beyond and tried to make it work with the Co-op despite the many challenges trying to make it work with the Co-op's existing building, where they are likely paying below market rents and they don't want to move to market rents. That's their decision. I personally, I live walking distance from the Co-op. I feel that they are making a mistake by not moving into this development and taking advantage of these opportunities to invest in their own growth and to see future profits. But, and I'm a member of the Co-op, made those views known, but there's not much that else that can happen. As Tony said, the city has given the Co-op most favored nation status throughout these negotiations. The state has given them a half a million dollar grant for upgrading their building, which is somewhat perplexing personally to me, but I wish them well, and I hope that they succeed, and I hope the junction succeeds, and I hope that all the hard work that's been put into this process continues and that we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Strasser. I'm from Willow Avenue. And I actually came this evening as the chair of the Tacoma Park Arts and Humanities Commission. But I'm a historian, and I am, among other things, a historian of retail, and I simply want to say that it is just not true that it is the least bit unusual for municipalities and states, for that matter, to support private enterprise. If anybody thinks that Walmart did it on their own, they're nuts. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Teri De La Santa. I live at 7610 Hammond Avenue, but I also work in Tacoma Park at the Tacoma Park Child Development Center, which is at the corner of Tulip and Maple Avenue, 310 Tulip. Recently, we've had a string of break-ins, and I think that Councilman Kovar is going to talk about it later. But we've had a lot of incidences where parents are either dropping off or picking up their children from the childcare center. And you all know as parents trying to juggle children and backpacks and diaper bags and things like that and getting in. And we have repeatedly reminded our parents about the importance of not leaving valuables in their car, but we've had a lot of break-ins into cars. And I truly support the police's efforts to continue to try and crack down on this, and if there are ways that the center can also do things that would be helpful in that. But I just want to make sure that But I just want to make sure that it's brought to your attention that this is happening and that we're, you know, we're seeking the support of city services and sort of alleviating this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Suzanne Lowen, 7202 Sycamore Avenue, and I want to comment on the development and the value of the Co-op to our community. During the development of Tacoma Junction, I believe it's our responsibility to the members of our community to ensure the continued health of TPSS Co-op. TPSS is an integral part of our regional food network, connecting us directly with local farmers and distributors. These direct relationships strengthen our community's food security. It's an essential consideration if the national food supply chain were weakened in any way. National grocery store chains rely on national distribution systems, which are more complex and thus more vulnerable. TPSS Co-op is an invaluable asset that is integral to the health and resiliency of our community. Its viability must be a top priority during and after any development of Tacoma Junction. At this time, I believe it is reasonable for the city to seek legal assurance of the continued ease of deliveries by TPSS Co-op suppliers and sufficient customer parking during any development of the city-owned lot at Tacoma Junction. Thank you.
Any other public comments this evening? All right, then we'll move on to council comments. Any council members have comments this evening? Councilmember Schultz.
First comment is that tomorrow night, Thursday night, at the Tacoma Park Rec Center, the New Hampshire Gardens Citizens Association is having a, one of its regular meetings, but this one in particular is kind of special because the Department of Public Works consulting engineers will be presenting initial proposed design plans for the requested sidewalk on Glen Side Drive that runs from the Glen Side Circle all the way up to Carroll Avenue. This is probably, this will be the first of a number of presentations by the engineers to interact with the residents and get feedback. So I encourage anybody who is from that neighborhood or has any interest in the process to show up for tomorrow night's meeting at seven, I think at 7:00. The second comment would be in regard to the reception that we had tonight. I wanted to second what Mayor Stewart said in her early first comments about the importance of committees. I served on one before I got on the council, so for one, for that free reason alone, committees are a wonderful breeding ground for potential members of the city council. And goodness knows, we need to have more competitive races in our city council races. But more importantly, they do a great service to us on the city council because there's a lot of people with a lot of expertise that can contribute that to the issues, before the issues even come to us. And it's comfortable and practical for us to be able to have certain committees focus on particular issues that we simply don't have time for, because our hands are full enough dealing with the stuff that we have already on our agenda. So it, the committees are kind of like an extension of the city council, but they institutionalize citizen participation, and that's really, really important because it sort of locks in that we are going to have community input on just about every darn thing that we can consider up here. And the only, the other point I'd like to make is that even though we have so many committees that we, none of us can memorize them all without having, you know, know all of them without looking at a list, I don't think we have enough of them. I actually do think that there's room for more. I mean, I have proposed, and the city council's going to entertain the establishment of a Economic Development Commission, which would be a committee of residents and business interests to help bring attention to that subject area, which is of growing importance. I also happen to think that we should have a committee on youth, whose memberships would be young people, teenagers, to pay attention to the interest of the young people in the city and to literally, like all the rest of the committees, come to the council periodically to talk about issues that are of interest to them and issues that are of concern to them. I've also, in the past, recommended that we might consider having a fiscal advisory board that would be a consulting committee to the, to the city manager during the budget process, to the finance department, and to the city council, made up of a small group of appointed people who have familiarity with municipal finance, to help act as a liaison between the community on the one hand and the city council at the other end to better communicate and help people understand so that we can communicate better with residents about what we're doing and why we have to make the decisions that we do, and that you who are out there wondering what the dickens this is all about have an intermediate voice to help you understand things better. But these are all ideas. We can probably think of some others, but the committee structure to this, in this city, is absolutely vital to what makes Tacoma Park the extraordinary place that it is. Thank you. Appreciate the chance to make a speech.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to talk briefly, and I'm glad that Teri mentioned this earlier, about the break-ins that have taken place at the Child Development Center on Tulip Avenue. And I'm not at that point in my life anymore. I can still vaguely remember the drop-off and pickup, and it's kind of a stressful time. I'm sort of half glad and half sad that I don't really do it anymore, but it can be an awkward situation, and the traffic around there is more difficult than I think it needs to be at times anyway. And so I did get a message, which I circulated to people in Ward One just a short time before the meeting, from the acting chief indicating that they are going to be upping the patrols, and I don't know enough about patrols to know if it's uniformed or people out of uniform. My guess is it might involve both, but I really think it's important that they keep doing that for a while and maybe do a little bit of enforcement of traffic and parking around there, too, because it can be very difficult if you try to pass through at the time. And I think sometimes that chaos can add to the opportunity that people might have to be able to do that. So I want to thank the police for the initial effort and encourage that that continues. So two other things. I don't know if anyone is here from Public Works, but we're still sort of waiting for the cones along Tulip Avenue that have been there since the fall, and before that, there was plantings that were stolen, and it's been a long time, but I think the indication that we had gotten was that that strip would be made beautiful and hopefully not get stolen this time in April or May. And so we're kind of during the period when I think, hopefully, that will happen, if you could check on that. And then the last thing, and it's a broader issue, and I want to thank the mayor and city staff as well for this last night. We had the second of three planned public community conversations with people from the city and from Silver Spring and elsewhere, and Montgomery College with respect to the building and construction renovation plans in the part of the Tacoma Park-Silver Spring campus that's over in North Tacoma. And I think the meeting last night, I think folks are still kind of digesting it. The mayor did a great job kicking it off and helping to ensure that it would be a really, I think, well-focused meeting. The key issues emerged last night, and the key issues were specifically not whether there should or shouldn't be a new math science building. Everybody agreed that there should, but where it would be located. And I think a number of residents and from Tacoma Park, but also from Silver Spring, which include a lot of pool users, and we talk a lot about pools, but there's a pool in Falcon Hall, which is the building on the campus closest to Tacoma Avenue, for those of you who can picture that. And there was a kind of a synergy from residents concerned about the potential size of the building, and then users of the pool and the athletic facilities in Falcon Hall, all of whom said they really don't want the current version that's been proposed by the college, which would involve taking down Falcon Hall and building a larger building closer to the residences to go forward. We're doing this series of meetings in order to get to a point where we can really understand what all the options are. I think, and they've been laid out pretty clearly, I'm looking forward to continuing the process. I will be sending out additional information on this as we go forward, but I just wanted to let those who are watching and those who are here who might not be as familiar with it, understand where we are. And I will say that for me, a pretty good case was made that it doesn't have to be at the current site that's being proposed, and I hope we will really get a serious opportunity to explore other locations. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Mael.
Yeah, thank you. Just to clarify, Councilmember Kovar, did you say that people stole the plantings and the cones?
Probably if the cones got... Probably if the cones got stolen, the neighbors might not be that mad, but no, the plants were stolen and the cones have been, the cones have been left. They're orange, but it's kind of like black coal on Christmas, especially when they're there for six months, so.
All right. Okay. Thank you. A resident made a really sweet request on behalf of their son, associated with the mural being painted on Prince George's Avenue, Conway Avenue, which is, they describe the story of every day, their son wants to come home and is eager to go out and see what, you know, new piece of the mural there, the artist has painted on the, on the wall and the retaining wall along New Hampshire Avenue. Right now, you can see three or four children, a large mole, and some architectural features starting to take shape. And the request was, it'd be great to have a community gathering, you know, a party with milk and cookies whenever the artist is done, so I just wanted to pass that along to city staff, which would be wonderful. And there's lots of other people who are enthusiastic about seeing it done as well, so I think there would be a well-attended gathering at some point when we have an update on the timeline and that. The second issue I wanted to bring to the public and my colleagues' attention, something we've discussed earlier. As residents know, we are going to start the process soon of looking for a new police chief. And in that process and through the budget process, other conversations we've had, we've talked a lot about the police department doing, continuing the great work that's already been ongoing for the last year and beyond in terms of expanding community engagement, youth engagement, in the ways that our police work with the community. The hiring process is something, you know, we need to do, we need to move forward with finding a chief, but one of the conversations that I'm interested in having in that process is, how do we, how do we, the council and the mayor, interact with the department heads, and in particular, the head of the police department, in terms of the hiring process and then in terms of once a chief is hired? And that's just an active conversation. It's one we actually had three or four years ago about the process of hiring heads of department. One idea we talked about a few years ago was basically an advising consent role for council. The city manager would select a candidate, and the council would have a vote to affirm candidates for department heads in the city. That was, that charter amendment was defeated, but nonetheless, it was a conversation that went on for some time and was a close vote. And so I'm interested in us having another conversation about that, but in the interim, I think it's important that we provide information to any police chief candidates in the recruitment process, that this is a city that really takes policing seriously and the work that the police can do with the community seriously, and that we're looking for candidates who are dynamic and flexible and have innovative ideas, and that one of the things that they may need to be, that they should be aware of as a candidate, is that the structure, the supervisory structure or the hiring process may change during the, during the application process or during the recruitment process or after they were hired. So I'm proposing to my candidates that we have a discussion in the near future about a resolution that would provide direction to the city manager on the hiring process, specifically asking for language in the search materials that would make clear to candidates that the city council is considering possible changes in the reporting structure of the police department, between the police department and the elected government, that the search materials should include some indication that in the future, there could be a change in the, in the supervisory relationship between council, direct engagement with council, engagement through the city manager, just the process of working with the police chief and the city manager in terms of the operation of our largest department. And then thirdly, using the process of a, of a hiring for a new police chief, to talk about the process of dealing with public and internal complaints within the Department of Police, and asking for us a change in the process so that that, the process of resolving complaints would include either the city manager or city council, or basically, we would have a discussion on that issue. So I'm indicating these things, and my interest in having this discussion. I don't mean to say that my position on any of these is clear or defined, but rather that I think it's important that, one, we move forward with the hiring process, but two, that we can do so in parallel with having a conversation about, about how we, how we structure the hiring process and reporting, so it's not there. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to associate myself with Councilmember Mael's comments regarding evaluating the police department and our future chief, and I look forward to that discussion. This Saturday, May 13th, 7:30 PM, here at the auditorium, the Tacoma Park Nuclear Free Committee is hosting an event honoring AC Byrd. Mr. Byrd is a Navy veteran, was a Navy veteran, atomic testing veteran, peace organizer, and one of the founders of WPFW. It should be a great event. There will be a short movie, there will be a panel to discuss Mr. Byrd's life, and I will give some opening remarks. I would like to thank the ACE Academy last night for hosting a parent engagement evening. It was excellent. This is the second year for the ACE Academy. For those not familiar, it is an after-school program at Essex House Apartments on Maple Avenue. Huge turnout. The kids did some performances, read poetry. It was, it was really nice. And thank the mayor and Captain Collington for also attending the event. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I have a couple of announcements myself. First, I want to thank Lucy Neary and the Safe of Roots to School Group and all the volunteers, our police department, the rec department, and the firefighters who came out for the 5K on Sunday. It was a great day. It was really terrific. Councilmember Mael and I both ran, and I'm going to say, I did a great time. I was really psyched in my time. And then on Sunday, we had a wonderful housing garden tour, so thank you to Historic Tacoma. They served up some beautiful weather and some wonderful homes and around Spring Park, and it was a really nice day to see those homes and see everyone out in the neighborhood. On Monday evening, I was able to meet with the Tacoma Park Mobilization Group focusing on immigration. We had a representative from the county's Gilchrist Center come and talk about the services that the county can provide to immigrants in the community, and we're working on other things that we'll probably likely put on an agenda in the future and will bring before council as well. The other thing I want to thank is that we, the Electric Vehicles Institute, we received a grant from them and have now a Level III fast charging unit in the parking lot. And so I was told, I forgot to write this down, I think it can charge a car up in like 10 minutes, is it? 20, 20. Still, it's really fast. And so that, that adds to the 14 other Level II stations that we have around the city. On Saturday night, before you come here with the Nuclear Free Committee, please stop by the Night Market at the Tacoma-Langley Crossroads from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. The Crossroads Development Authority and the Crossroads Community Food Network is holding a night out to come taste food from local vendors, get to know some of the businesses over there, meet neighbors, and I think it'll be a wonderful evening. Let's hope there's no rain right now. And one other thing, I want to give an update on two issues that residents and the council have been requesting of the county council as they go through their budget. As I had updated folks, the, our request for a paramedic at our fire station, since we are only one of two fire stations in Montgomery County, not have a paramedic, that request made it through committee and is now hopefully before the full council for a vote. So if you have time, emailing council, county council members. So if you have time, emailing county council members, thanking them that it is on the reconciliation list, but getting that is important. In addition, we have talked about asking for a feasibility study on the Washington Adventist Hospital campus for a potential aquatic center. The hospital is scheduled to move in May of 2019. We've been working with the hospital, Washington Adventist University, and Montgomery College to request that the county fund a feasibility study. As of this week, we had requested $50,000, but $25,000 has been put on the reconciliation list. They split the money between us and Bethesda Rec, so hopefully we'll still get $25,000. But that is something that could also, if people have time, to email their county council members and request that. If folks need background information on that or more information, please email me and I can provide that to you. And then the final thing is looking at our schedule for, once we get done with our budget. In June and July, the council is on recess in the month of August. As Councilmember Mayo spoke about, and we had started that conversation a few weeks ago regarding the recruitment of our new police chief, I asked my colleagues that if there is something they would like to see on an upcoming agenda to send that to me in the next week or so to make sure that we plan out June and July meetings. So I'll probably be firming up the June and July agenda in the next, like, week, week and a half. So if there's anything you want to see before we go on recess, just let me know. And I think that's it for me. I'll kick it over to the city manager.
Thank you. Got a number of items. I'll try to go through many of them quickly. We addressed the stop sign at Kansas and Westmoreland that was obscure that Councilmember Koreshi reported last week. Not so successful about the pote on Carroll and there, Westmoreland. We're hoping that SHA gets, and Washington Gas gets a permanent patch in there. We do not know the status of the SHA crosswalks at the junction. We've got multiple calls into the project manager about the crosswalk. We know that they are working on the signalization at Piney Ranch and Maryland 410. We haven't been able to confirm what happens with the sidewalk, with the crosswalk. And we will be doing a story on the lobbyist, as Councilmember Mayo suggested, which is a great idea. One of the things that I'm very proud of and especially appropriate on the first night of our first reading of our budget is that we once again received the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for our comprehensive annual financial report, our CAFR. This time Susan Chung was the lead on that, working with our auditors. And Alisa Chama also helps with a lot of the background work. This is a huge task, and it does require, it's vigorously and rigorously reviewed by the committees of the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association. Each year when we apply for it, they send back detailed comments, and I'm pleased that, once again, we've received it. I think we're now down to 11 years in a row winning this for our CAFR. And as Ms. Chung has mentioned, we are aiming to have that for our budget document as we move forward.
Can we give a round of applause?
Yes, yes. It is a big deal, and we really appreciate the hard work that went into that. We did receive a quote on the request to fill in the atrium floor ceiling between the first and second levels. That quote is $227,000. It also includes extended dispatch area, interview room, and bathroom. And we're trying to get something that's more specific for just the floor portion, and we will get back to you on that. As the mayor mentioned, we have a fast charging station installed. Fairly soon, we'll have it so that it accepts credit card payments for no more than $2 per charge. Once that goes in, that's, we will be directing that commercial vehicles, for example, the taxicabs that use our electric chargers, would not be able to use the free electric chargers anymore. They would need to use the fast chargers so that at least the free stations are available to the residents. The estimated cost of this charger is, and installation, is $100,000. So it's a big investment in Tacoma Park. We did put some staff time in to coordinate where it goes, but we appreciate that our sustainability manager and director of public works continues to search and recruit this kind of thing. $100,000 is a big deal, and we're talking about our budget. Really do appreciate that that was a contribution to the city. We did get the bids opened for the Ethan Allen Project. The bid came in at just about 10% higher than the estimation. We also received pricing for the construction management and contract administration for $187,000. And so it does increase the cost of the project by about $125,000. So we will make those adjustments. As we go forward through the year, and part of the reason that I liked reserves is that we're, we've got big projects on the way, and we don't know what we're working with till we get bids in. On this one, we're pretty close, and I think it's worth moving forward. The next one that we'll see is the Flower Avenue Green Street. So these are things that we will keep you apprised on. If there's some changes or other kinds of activities that we need to address prices, we will be talking with you. Wanted to mention that HCD is continuing to do its housing tour. It went to, on May 8th, to Victory Tower. And let's see, the next one is Essex House. So we really appreciate the outreach that our staff is doing in meeting with the residents of these various larger facilities. We had 1,458 registrants for the TKPK 5K race. That's huge. And it's too bad I didn't get to see it, but how did you do versus the county councilman?
He didn't show up.
Who did you win?
The mayor beat the other councilmember who was in the race.
Well, you know, so there you go. You really won. So there, at least you showed up. Wonderful.
He was too afraid. I scared him.
And we did feature our smoothie bike, our blender bike, where you can get on the bicycle, and it powers a little blender and it makes smoothie drinks. We practiced working on that last week, and it's a great, it's a fun feature at these various events to see how important it is to ride a bike. Not everybody gets to smoothie after you ride a bike, but at least you get that. Today was a Bike to School Day, and on Friday, the 19th, is Bike to Work Day. Wanted to give a strong shout-out to Captain Frischhorn for functioning as acting police chief. He has done an outstanding job and was very responsive through this process. It just reinforced my belief that we have strong leadership in the Police Department. And beginning tomorrow, Captain Ty Collington will be acting police chief, so we'll have him for two weeks, two months. And look forward to that. Let's see, and I wanted to, I wanted to talk for a moment about my schedule. I have been mostly out of the office since last Friday on family leave. And as many people know, my husband's cancer has worsened, so I'm at home probably through June. Jason Danwer will be functioning as acting city manager, as he's already been doing, and I'm sure that that will work just fine, so I'm pleased with that. I am here tonight for the budget, because that's the biggest thing that I do and you do on the council, and to thank my staff for their hard work on that. This is actually Public Service Recognition Week, and we have wonderful public servants that work for the city staff and are on the council committees. It was appropriate that the council committees got honored tonight. You know, the folks that I work with really deserve the recognition. They serve and really do want to make the community better, and they use their professional skills to do that. I'm so pleased to work with them, and I just want to let them know and you know that I'm proud of them. That's all.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On May 18th, Thursday, Montgomery Parks is having a public forum on their CIP. Can we get a readout after that? Can you have them send us some information of what's in their CIP?
Yeah, actually, I'm sure we'll follow up on that. There's, usually, we like to testify as we go forward. I don't know that this is the place for that for us, but it's always good to keep on top of the park's CIP.
Right, because residents want, in Ward 5, want to have the equipment replaced at the Sligo Park, at Sligo Creek Parkway.
Near Kennebuck.
Right, in Kennebuck. So the Parks Department said that it's on their radar, but they're contemplating moving the park. And I can't attend this meeting. I have something else I gotta go to for the MML chapter.
Yeah, one of the things, just as we go through it and she looked, there's a policy about where the placement of play equipment is in county parks vis-à-vis water. And they tend to move farther and farther away. What that, if that were fully enforced, we could lose most of our playgrounds within the county parks. And so as we go through this, if they're talking about moving something, we need to really make sure that we don't lose those facilities in a convenient location. So in the past, we've been very good about kind of keeping our grandfathered play equipment in place, and get it upgraded, but stay in the same location, because we could otherwise lose it with their standards.
Okay, so I'll email you the information.
Yeah, actually, Mr. Danwer.
Councilmember Mayo, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had a quick note. The traffic signal on Carroll or Laurel coming from, between the post office and going toward Ace Hardware. The tree there partly obscures the light, so you were mentioning the pote on Westmoreland. It made me think of that issue. Thank you.
Carroll and Laurel.
Carroll and Laurel.
Right in front of the SunTrust. Thank you.
Councilmember Michelle, say Jason.
Yeah, you mentioned the housing tour being conducted by our Housing Department. How frequently are those scheduled, and when it moves into Ward 6, will you be letting us know?
Yeah, I'll make sure that, we'll communicate and make sure that we have a listing of if they have a schedule already. I'm not sure that they do. I think they're working on getting the schedule together, but make sure that it gets shared.
Okay, good.
Great, let's get on, since it's almost 9 o'clock, onto our agenda, our voting items. The first item is the first reading ordinance adopting our FY '28 tax rate. City manager, want to take us through that?
Sure. Actually, I want to first indicate that we have a replacement cover sheet, because there were a couple bullet points that were incorrect. But in general, the council threw a lot of work, first by setting their priorities and then taking the proposed budget and going through with it, going through it very carefully, came up with a number of items that went through on the reconciliation list last week. And the resulting tax rate for that, and we'll talk about the tax rate first, is that the tax proposed, that the real property tax rate will be set at $0.5348 per $100 of assessed value, which is less than the fiscal year rate, our current year, that's fiscal year 2017 rate of $56.75. And it's also below the constant yield tax rate of $0.5358. So what this means is that this is a real, real tax cut for property owners in the city of Tacoma Park. The decreased rate from the constant yield results in a decrease of tax revenue of about $22,000. One of the things that you'll see when you look through some of the paperwork on this, and I just want to highlight this, when you're looking at the amount of revenue that is expected from the real property tax, sometimes there's comparisons to what the projected revenue would have been, was for 2017 compared to what we're projecting for 2018. I want to first say that it's always projected, because the State Department of Assessment and Taxation makes estimates about what the assessable base is, both on, they estimate what the worth is of properties, and then there's various credits and things that can bring that amount down. Second, last year was the first year of the three-year assessment grouping after a new assessment process had gone through our triennial process. And we had been informed that a number of very large buildings and properties were interested in having their tax rate reassessed and challenging that. So we actually lowered our projected amount of tax, property tax revenue by $200,000 last year. That was part of our budget. So when you see some comparisons and you see, you know, how much money, we were bringing in more revenue even though the property tax rate is less than constant yield. So I just wanted to kind of highlight this, because it's a confusing thing, and depending on which things you're comparing, you could be confused. The real news is that, in fact, the actual amount of projected revenue is less than it would have been if we used a constant yield amount. So it's $22,000 less. If you've got questions on that at some time in the future, it does take sometimes charting it out, and we're happy to help you on that. The changes, yes?
Can I just ask a question on that?
Sure.
So you may have just said this, but I did.
I just want to make sure I understand. So you're, at the bottom of this page, it says the, and I'm not sure if it's the right one anymore, but it says, "The rate will lead to an increase in expected real property tax rate of $296,000." So notwithstanding the drop, we're bringing in more taxes total. Is that because new businesses opened and did better?
First, that was an error, that's why we have a corrected sheet. Second, it is partly to explain, it's mostly explained by the $200,000 that we underestimated our property tax revenue last year, because we were nervous about those appeals, and for the fact that the way that SDAT, the State Department of Assessment and Taxation, does assessments, the estimates that they give us each Valentine's Day changes by the next Valentine's Day. And so the amount that they thought we would have for 2017 is now greater than they originally projected. So that there's, that explains, I think, maybe $90,000 of the difference.
So is there an increase in the aggregate amount, notwithstanding the cut? I'm not opposed to that, I'm just trying to understand.
There is, if you look at the numbers for estimated, for FY '17 versus estimated FY '18. If you look at the revised numbers by SDAT, it's a decrease.
Okay.
Okay, the, I think the right time for me to go ahead through this is now, because you'll have a series of budget ordinances. But I just wanted to highlight the major changes that were made to my budget through reconciliation. There was a reduction of funds, a relatively small reduction of funds for the Neighborhood Community Economic Development Initiative, still leaving funds for our economic development strategy to move forward. A small reduction in contributions for the Facility Maintenance Reserve. The staff brought forward a reduction in funds required for the health insurance premiums, because we got a better rate. Similarly, a reduction in funds required for workers' compensation premiums, because we got a better rate. A reduction of funds for the ADA Sidewalk Project. A reduction of funds in the Equipment Replacement Reserve. New funding for emergency assistance to residents for tree removal services. A reduction in funds for some office improvements for our Human Resources, Information Technology, and Housing Departments. Creation of a new city council intern position. There was some increased police rebate money from the county, and there was also additional funds for a police accreditation program. In front of, before you are the three different ordinances that you'll need to adopt this evening. And if there's any other questions about a tax rate, the first ordinance is adopting the FY '2018 tax rate of $0.5348 per 100.
Councilmember Kovar, do you have any other questions? Your light was still on.
Oh, sure.
That's okay. Alright. Any other clarifying questions before I ask someone to move the ordinance adopting the FY '2018 tax rate? Who would like to move the ordinance? Who would like to move the ordinance?
Move it.
Councilmember Siemens moved it, second by Councilmember Mail. Any discussion or questions? So, I would just like to comment, and I want to say that I'm actually, I'm voting for the tax rate this year, and I'm glad of all the hard work that went into it. But I do need to be on the record that this tax rate makes me nervous. Our reserves are not as robust as I would like to see them, given some of the larger projects we're doing and just the national, as I've said before, the national context we're working in, as well as the state context. Personally, I would have liked to have seen a bit more in our reserves, and I look forward to having a conversation on our reserve policy soon. So, that's all. All right. All those, we don't need, you don't need to roll phones, all right? No? Okay. All those in favor of the ordinance adopting the FY 2018 tax rate, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No? Okay. Now, we need to convene as the Stormwater Management Board. Can I have a motion to Councilmember Smith, second?
Second.
Councilmember Mail. All those in favor of convening as the Stormwater Management Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now the Stormwater Management Board. We have the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2018 Stormwater Management Budget. See, manager, want to talk about that?
Yes, on this one, the annual base fee went from $55 to $92 because of the tax cut. For those who are paying property taxes, it's less of an increase than if that money were on their tax, tax rolls. This helps fund the needs of the, our stormwater program, meets requirements of the state, and was strongly supported by the Committee on the Environment.
Thanks. Any clarifying questions on that one before I ask for a motion to move?
What question?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilwoman Kovar.
Can you just clarify one point, if you don't mind? So, in Section Three of the resolution, which is down at the bottom of the first page as it appears here, it says the budget, the amount of money raised that can be spent on the projects in the, or for the purposes of the stormwater remediation, is 809,650. And then, in the detailed material that accompanies the packet, it doesn't show up in the same way, because it lists a few projects, but it's a different, it's not all of that money. So, can you explain?
Besides, besides the actual projects, we also fund a portion of our city engineer for the work, and not a lot of the maintenance work that's done.
That serves the underlying purpose?
That all serves the stormwater program. And there's little bits of a couple other staff that also work on stormwater projects.
Okay.
All right. Who would like to move the ordinance adopting the FY 2018 Stormwater Management Budget? Councilmember Schultz, second.
Second.
Councilmember Kreshi. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Mail?
Yeah, I wanted to make a few comments, because I've been speaking about the stormwater budget for a while now. I intend to vote against tonight. It's not against the idea of investing in stormwater control, capture and treatment, and achieving what we're supposed to achieve in, for the Chesapeake Bay, for the region, or that I don't think Tacoma Park should be a leader. It's a process issue, and I think that we, the, what are called the required determinations at the state level, that the state negotiates with counties and cities, and ultimately that the state has to get sign off from the Environmental Protection Agency on, they're still draft. And from my perspective, the plan that we have in front of us, upon which the rate is based, is something that really should go through a longer period outside the budget process of council comment, public input, before moving forward. So, I'll just identify a couple of things, so I hope we have that conversation in the near future. But a couple of things that in conversations I've had with the state and looking at the proposed plan that I would already indicate are areas of interest, are, for example, that under the state requirements or allowances, however you want to phrase it, for municipalities and counties, we can get credit for any stormwater treatment that's been done on any public or private property in the city, going back to 2006. So, Gassini Shoes, a business on New Hampshire Avenue, did a major stormwater treatment facility in the back of their parking. That's an example of a facility that I just don't know, based on the information we have, whether we're getting credit for that or not. In Ward Five, the hospital, the lower edge of the hospital campus, they put in some just pipes to control runoff from the parking lot, but also some, some capture facilities down near Sligo Creek Trail. Those are a second example. Those are just examples that I'm aware of in my day-to-day basis. But if those are things that appropriately get credit, and we're not looking at credit for those, then, you know, there's a shift in how much it would cost and what kind of projects we do. And the other thing that I would emphasize, and I'm going to propose when we talk about the budget policy resolution, is that I would propose that we put in that resolution a clause that makes clear that future tree planting by the city of the trees, for example, that we purchased through a consent agenda item last week, that those trees can be planted on both public or private land, and that the City Council is indicating its flexibility to allow both kinds of activities.
And we do actually try to do that on private as well.
And I just want to make it clear through policy, because it has, that has been a point of debate that I've heard, including from the Public Works Director. And so, I just want to be crystal clear about that. But from my perspective, for example, in this plan, we achieve our city goals around stormwater, but we also achieve our city goals around tree canopy by doubling or tripling the investment in trees that are being used to adjust the stormwater goal. And we're only going to be able to do that if we, if we expand on private lands. So, those are examples of the conversation that I wish we had had before raising the fee to $92. And so, that's the basis for me voting against tonight.
Any other comments on this? All right. All those in favor of adopting the FY 2018 Stormwater Management Budget, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
All right, so we have two opposed, five support. And now, we'll have the first reading ordinance adopting the FY 2018 budget. Any clarifying questions on that before I ask for it to be moved? Who would like to move the budget?
Move it.
Councilmember Siemens, second. Councilmember Schultz, seconds. Any questions or comments? I, I'll comment, and I just want to say thank you to our city manager, our finance director, our deputy city manager, all the heads of our departments, and everyone who put together this budget this year. While I did say I'm a little nervous about our tax rate, I will say that the process we went through from starting back in January and setting our priorities as a council to the draft budget the city manager delivered to us, I think this was an excellent process. I think we spent the last month and a half really going through this budget, and I think it's, it's really an excellent budget, and a lot of that is due to the work of our staff. So, thank you very much. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you. I want to say, this is the eighth budget that I've worked on, and there has been a very steady, discernible improvement in the quality of the budget, the excellence, I think, of the staff, although, you know, Yvonda Brooks was outstanding.
Yes, she was great.
So, I sure wouldn't take anything away from her work on these budgets over the years. But I think that this year, I felt, and I'll speak for all of us, more in control of what, of the decisions that we were, we were being asked to make, and a better understanding, a deeper, more thorough understanding of the trade-offs. And I hope that residents kind of caught some of that as well. It's a never-ending quest for, to gain clarity. But I do really want to praise staff for the quality of the work.
Councilmember Mail?
Yeah, I wanted to thank staff as well, and also thank the city manager, including for a comment that she made to me when she was deputy city manager, I think in my first year on council, which was, you know, "Don't abstain. Vote for the things that you're for, but against the things you're against." And I have voted against the last two budgets, I'm going to vote for this budget. There's a lot to liken here. I am excited about the accreditation step that we've taken with the Police Department. The investments we're making in housing and sustainability are exciting, the capital projects, as at least residents of Ward Two know, who spend their hours reading the emails I send. The debt that the city has is at historically low levels right now, which someone could say, "Well, why stop there? Why not go all the way to zero?" But to me, it looks like we have a very low level of debt. It's a great time to, to invest in projects. Interest rates are still relatively low, not that we ever pay that high of interest rates at a municipal level. But it's a great time to think about capital projects. Really excited about the Flower Avenue project and the Crossroads Project between New Hampshire Avenue and Ethan Allen, and both former city staff and current city staff that have put all the work into planning those projects. It'll be a while before we actually see it, can bike it, can cross the streets at that spot, and enjoy the benefits of the project, but it's really exciting. And the library project as well. And I think there's a lot of work still to do on visioning exactly what we get out of that project, but, but that's exciting. The one thing I just wanted to indicate to my colleagues on, and that was the, for me, the sort of final factor in deciding whether to vote for the budget or not, is the issue of the police budget. And it's, my, my concern is just the sort of long-term projection of costs overall. And we heard Ms. Machuie talk about tax burden on residents earlier. And given that the Police Department at about $8 million is the largest piece of our budget, and that that's been growing faster than, than most other departments, pieces of our budget, and we just have to look at that. If you just were to project out 20 years, how big the police budget would be based on rates of growth in the past, it would be really big. And so, at some point, it's got to stop. I mean, I think we'd all say, well, it's in five years or in two years or something, it's going to stop, or 10 years. But I think we just need to vision, where is that point? Where is the point where you have a rotating cycle of four patrols being able to be active all the time, the number of uniformed officers it takes to staff that is our current base? And then, we have investigative staff, undercover staff, data staff, all the dispatch, all the pieces that go around it. And so, at some point, it should slow down, even with wage growth being what it should be. And so, I just encourage folks to think about that question, you know, where it goes in the long term and how we, how we can keep track of that issue. There are other issues around the Police Department that I'm interested in and concerned about, and that I see us making progress on, and I'm excited for some of those conversations that I hope will come up in the next six to eight months, that are policy conversations, some of which can be had partly through the budget conversation. But I just hope that this is something that gets resolved, or that there's progress on, in the next year and the next process of the budget. And I think ultimately, it's, it's nice to get to a spot where, for me, there's enough in the budget to really like that, that I'm happy to vote for it.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I would like to thank the city manager and staff for all their work on this budget. It's, I think people sometimes don't appreciate how much work is put into the budget in preparing the draft budget. I also thank my colleagues for the healthy discussions that we had surrounding the budget. I think it was a very good year in not just addressing the issues that were presented in the budget itself, but also talking about some of the areas that we want to continue discussions on beyond the passing of this budget. As Councilmember Mail said, I too am interested in some of the issues that were brought up surrounding the Police Department, but I think that we have a plan going forward, and I'm glad to see that. I also, I'm excited about the number of projects that we're talking about this, this coming year. We included some healthy spending, but also addressing some of the major projects that we've talked about. Again, I, I thank everyone for their work on this.
Councilwoman Kovar?
Thank you, Mayor. And I also want to thank Ms. Ludlow and the rest of the staff, and Susan, and Jason, and Jessie, and others for doing a great job, and my colleagues, and the mayor for running a good process when we did reconciliation the other day. When we got into the budget process, I mentioned, and I said this in some of the things that I circulated to the area that I represent, that I had two goals, which were, one, to continue, have the city continue to invest in programs and initiatives that benefit our residents, and in particular, those who may be underserved or who are in lower income. And I think when we look at what we're able to do, and people have mentioned some of these already, but the library, which I think is going to be very important, additional funds for affordable housing, more programs for youth, initial, additional efforts on those who are disabled, and the list goes on, to do those things. And then, my second goal was to try to do that in a way which was affordable, which would include, if possible, getting, getting the tax rate a little bit lower. And I think we're actually able to do that. I don't, I don't feel that any of the reductions that were made, and the staff was very good about coming forward with some areas where we could save, even as compared with the budget, which I, which I appreciate. I don't think we cut into anything that is fundamental to benefits and services that residents receive, or the things that make the city the amazing, unique place that it is. We were able to find some areas to make reductions. We didn't all agree on them, but we came up in the end with a package that, we had the tax rate here, city manager, to her credit, proposed a lowering of that, and we went a little bit lower. So, I feel like we did preserve and actually invest more in programs that benefit residents and work to keep it affordable in terms of the tax rate. Now, I understand you can debate a lot, what does it mean to be affordable? And some people even said to me, "Well, how can you spend money on affordable housing? Won't that lead to increases in taxes?" But I think if that's used wisely, that doesn't have to be the case. And I think on affordable housing in particular, because I've been asked about this by some residents, we are going to, when we take up the resolution next week, specify that some minimum percentage of that be spent in a fairly rapid manner. I think it was important to try to build that, that money up. I would have liked to have spent it sooner, but I think we're going to get to that. So, I just want to say that I think those two goals, investing in programs that benefit people and still keeping the tax rates manageable, don't have to be in conflict all the time. I think we demonstrated that with this budget. Thanks.
Councilwoman Kreshi?
Thanks, Mayor. This budget process, as I've indicated to my colleagues, when you're a new council member, the budget process itself is a very, it's an uphill battle in terms of understanding the process and how to articulate positions that are important to you and members of your community and your constituents. I found this budget process to be great. I think it was, the budget reflects the right amount of deliberation and debate and compromise that I think is important. And I appreciate each of my colleagues bringing up competing views that have, frankly, for even myself, have pushed me one way or the other on reconciliation items. I know that folks, including the mayor, as she said on the record, and so did the city manager, you're not necessarily that comfortable with the rate. But I think I'm happy that, at the very least, the budget reflects our values, particularly as it pertains to affordable housing. And the capital projects, I mean, the most important thing to me is the library, and I'm really happy that that's a go in this budget, because I think it's going to be a very, very important improvement in our community, all the while reducing the rate, which I think is great. But we'll talk about next budget season, what the rate will be, based upon how low we've gone this time around. And you know, it's, talking as a council up here, it's kind of annoying, I'm sure, if you're watching at home, to hear people repeat the same things over and over again. But I think you can't say thank you enough to the city manager. You know, I take great issue, I hope you know, with residents and individuals who often bring into question how much you do for the city and how much you, you get paid, because it's public and we're a transparent community. But frankly, sometimes I think you don't get paid enough for the efforts you put in, even despite what's going on with you personally. I just hope you know that I have a great deal of respect for you, and I appreciate all that you do for our community, much of it behind closed doors and behind the scenes. And that goes for your entire staff. And I also say the same to the mayor, who's a tireless advocate on these issues and sort of steers the ship in a way where we're able to get things done efficiently, even though it's 9:14 PM now. But I just, I want to say thank you to my colleagues and everybody in the room.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm going to echo my colleagues' comments and thank Ms. Ludlow and staff. The budget process gets better and better each year. It is easier for council members, at least for myself, to understand how we're spending money, the impact of decreasing the tax rate. Property taxes for municipalities is primarily the only way we get money, and they have to fund a lot of services, you know? So, when the body has to make these decisions, it's very, very So, when the body has to make these decisions, it's very, very difficult. We can't just, you know, shake down the state for more money, like through highway user revenue, which is owed to us. We have to work with primarily property taxes. So, I thank you, Mr. Damweller, Weber, Ms. Chung, you know, being the new person running our finance department, I know it hasn't been easy, a lot of balls in the air. But the budget, I think, is probably the most important activity for a government body to do. It is our statement of what is important to our community. And in this budget, there are a lot of good things. I am happy to see that we will maintain our leadership on stormwater by increasing the rate that was recommended by the Director of Public Works. I think that is extremely important. And I am also thankful that my colleagues did agree to put money in the budget for accreditation for the police department. That's not the end of the process, but it gets us to the starting line, and that's extremely important. If there isn't any money in a bucket, it's very difficult to move that initiative. So, I want to thank everyone for working on this this year. It has been a great process. And a special thank you to the mayor. She has done an extraordinary job trying to shepherd all of us to the table and move this budget forward. Thank you.
Mayor, can I say a few words now? I just wanted to thank all of the council members also. It used to be that the council didn't even want to meet and talk strategic goals, and it's remarkably more helpful for us when you set them. And I really appreciated then my staff taking those to heart. I was so thrilled when we had our internal meetings to have our various department heads come in and say, doing this for you, success. I'm, you know, looking at folks who are disabled, I wanted suggesting this amount for the housing reserve, all of these different kinds of things. I felt they really had listened to you and wanted to make sure that they were helping get there. So, it did make it a little bit easier to put those things together, and I appreciated that. They also were remarkably fiscally conservative. They did not come back with increases for kind of small things in their departments and that kind of thing, and you can see that by the small rate of increase. Susan Chung has been a wonderful finance director, and she's, she does have a lot of the same eagle eye characteristics that Yvonne DeBrooks had. She smiles more, though, which goes over really well with the rest of the staff, too, and does help make a difficult process a little easier. One of my favorite things so far this year was that after the reconciliation budget, I sent Susan an email, thank you for her work, and she mentioned that she looked forward to the next one. Oh, my God, only a finance director looks forward to budget process again. But I think it does speak to the commitment that she has to making sure that this is the right kind of process and document from our side that can help you do your job. And so, I do appreciate it. It was frankly the easiest budget that I've worked with because of the great work of staff and the direction of council, which helped us put things in the right buckets. And as you said, if it's not in a bucket, it's not going anywhere. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor of adopting our FY 2018 budget, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Awesome. To me, I miss. I just want to mention, we're not going to do a deep dive in this evening, but we did pass around the resolution establishing policy objectives associated with the fiscal year 2018 budget. As we were going through our budget process, I believe it was Councilmember Mayo's idea to document our intent. So, we have a lot of conversations. We spend a month and a half, two meetings a week, for a number of weeks, talking about the budget. And we felt that it would be important to also document our intent behind some of the decisions, to accompany this, and in particular, so that future city councils could see why we did certain things. So, at the moment, the draft has a clause regarding the stormwater fee, our intent on, as Councilmember Kovar talked about, spending a percentage of the housing reserve, the commitment to review the personal property tax in time for next year's deadline, the exploration, as Councilmember Schill talked about, establishing an economic development commission, the police department accreditation, and, oh, that the money regarding the design for the atrium, we want it to go to the atrium. And then, the final clause is regarding the setting of the fiscal reserve, the reserves policy. So, we're gonna vote on this next week. It is, I believe, or will be up on the city website with our agenda. And if council members just want to email or raise some additions to this or changes, I know some people have already started to do that, and they've been incorporated in this draft. Okay. That work for everybody? Great. And I think the city manager's gonna go home, right? So, and I think we'll just say, thank you for everything that you've done. Please take this time to be with your family. We feel incredibly confident that we are in capable hands. So, we just want to thank you for getting us through this budget. And now, go home and be with your family. Thank you. All right. We'll switch gears. It's really hot in here. Now, we're going to do our next voting item, which is the second reading Charter Amendment Resolution on the nominations and elections. And I believe our city attorney is here. We do like a little Vanna White over there.
Chase has got his most important job.
Right. Changing the name. Very good. All right. This is the second reading. We already had our first reading on this. Sorry, I'm just shuffling my papers. Kind of the deputy city manager or the acting city manager would like to say anything regarding this, or? Okay. City attorney have anything to speak towards this, or?
Just one update, unless you all wanted another summary of the ordinance. The resolution, the update, is that we are on track to get the MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, with the County Board of Elections executed. The State Election Commission said that, or, State Board of Elections said that they have no concerns about the draft that we've negotiated. So, that's an important piece that is going to fall into place.
Great. And just as a recap, for all those tuning in for the first time on this conversation that we've been having for a while now, what we are looking at is adopting a charter amendment that would, one, change the date of the city elections from odd number of years to even number of years. The second thing it would do is, currently as drafted, it would set the term for the mayor and city council elected in 2017 to one year. The third thing it would do is change the date of the nominating meeting to the second Tuesday after Labor Day in an election year. The fourth item, it would extend the time for certification of election results. And finally, it would change the day on which the newly elected mayor and city council members take office to the second Wednesday after the election. All right. How we are going to proceed this evening is, we had some discussion of this the first time we voted on this item, reminding my colleagues that, according to our city code, we follow Robert's Rules of Order when we discuss these items. And I just want to thank the city clerk and our city attorney for reminding us and providing a kind of a cheat sheet on procedures, just in case, as we discuss amendments and other things, things get a little complicated. So, we have our roadmap for this evening, and unless there's any other, any clarifying questions on the procedure or anything else, I will ask for someone to move this. Okay? Who would like to move our charter amendment on nominations and elections?
Mayor.
Yeah, sorry.
I'd like to, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but to move for reconsideration of an amendment that I raised last week.
I need to move the motion first, and then you can do that.
Clearly, I didn't read the document close enough.
That's right. That's right. I knew the answer. All right. Councilmember Mayo and Councilmember Kovar seconded. Councilmember Kreshe.
And Councilmember Kreshe, what you want to do is renew your motion to amend.
I renew my motion to amend to specifically address Page 2 of the draft Charter Amendment Resolution, lines 44 through 47, which specifically provide for a one-year term for the newly elected council in 2017 to then move towards synchronization in 2018. I won't state my reasons now, because I understand somebody has to second it, but my recommendation is to amend it such that the term from 2017, beginning 2017, would be a three-year term with resumption of two-year terms in 2020, as opposed to 2018.
I would like to renew my second.
All right. Now, we need to vote on this. So, all those in favor of considering this motion, please raise your hands. One, two, three, four. All those opposed? One, two. It passes. We can, we've got four votes. All right. So, then, Councilmember Kreshe, do you want to state your reasoning?
Yes. As I indicated last week, the charter amendment, as it currently stands, calls for, as folks know, we're, we as council members serve in two-year terms. We would like to move towards synchronization as a body, and as this document contemplates as quickly as possible, and the earliest opportunity being 2018 with the midterm state and federal elections. As somebody who's a new council member, who I've referred to this issue before while talking about the budget, I ask my colleagues to look very closely, if we're gonna vote on this issue, to changing the one-year term from 2017 to 2018 to making it a three-year term, such that the individual serve until 2020. I think it's undisputed, and it's been raised by the Board of Elections, that from a cost standpoint, it's going to be cheaper, and it's gonna make more sense. But I'd like to talk more about just the intangibles and aspects of being a council member and being new on the council. I don't think anybody's quite public yet about what they're going to do in 2017 on this body, and they don't have any reason to go public of whether they're gonna ever run again or not. But there's a chance, reading the tea leaves and the word on the street, there could be as many as three vacancies on this body, such that new council members could join and would be elected in 2017. Three new members who would come in for a 12-month term, which frankly, let's be real, it's actually a 10-month term, because you have those recesses that we take in different parts of the year. Then, you have a one-and-a-half to two-month budget process that we're going through now. And right after being elected, the first thing you work on is your budget retreats to identify your priorities, which takes several weeks as well. So, even though it's a one-year term, it's a much truncated period of time for this person to actually govern effectively, before they have an opportunity to then worry about reelection all over again. I think that, given the learning curve, given the cost associated with it, and given what I think in real time is a shorter term than one year in terms of actual governing and identifying the issues before you're back in campaign season, I think it makes total sense for us, as a body, to amend the charter such that 2017, the new members of the council, whoever are elected, some may be up here, some may not, to three-year terms with the resumption of a two-year term beginning in 2020. So, that's the basis for my amendment.
Thank you. Any other comments on the amendment before us?
I just, I need to explain one additional amendment that will be required in conjunction with that, which is on Page 4 of 6, Section 606, Line 25. It would, we'd have to amend it so that in every even-numbered year commencing in 2020, the voters will elect the council.
Can we do that, we can do that, though?
Yes.
In all what Councilmember Kreshe has put forward?
Yes.
Okay.
This is...
To clarify my amendment, Madam Mayor, obviously, the whereas clause that I've indicated on Page 2 is what I would ask to be changed, and any resulting change from that, that would be relevant throughout the document, would also be amended accordingly, as the city attorney has identified.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. I respectfully disagree with my colleague, and I understand that this is a serious effort on his part to try to make the overall change work more smoothly. There are a few reasons why. One, I just want to say, it looks like, from the material here, and this is just one quick point, that it says that November 2018 election will cost $30,000. So, that's $30,000, you know, spaced out over the amount of time you're talking about. That doesn't strike me as a make or break thing. So, I'm just gonna say that first. My own personal view, I talked about this before, others may disagree with it, I'm just not comfortable with the idea that I'm voting for myself to have more time. I think the most important point, though, is that the purpose behind the underlying change, what we're trying to do is looking at the fact that we have higher turnout in even years, whether they're presidential or state and congressional, is to encourage higher turnout for our local elections. So, by doing this, if we adopt your amendment, we're actually saying, but you gotta wait even longer to get to that. So, we're actually locking in the low turnout up until 2020. So, I think that goes against the purpose of what we're trying to do here. I think additionally, and people have talked about, well, you know, we're gonna have to hire a few more people in order to manage four or five precincts, instead of just one voting area, the way we do now. And, you know, that's something that we'd have to work out there, some logistics there. I think it would be much better to do that first one in a non-presidential year, so that, in other words, in 2018, when maybe the turnout is only still going up three or fourfold, but not six or sevenfold, that would be the time. So, basically, what we're doing here is saying, we're just gonna throw ourselves into that the first time, you know, with the logistical challenges around the two lines and so on, in a presidential year. So, I think that's another reason why. And, you know, I think people have said, well, it'd be great to have all those three years to plan for it. If anyone up here thinks we're actually gonna start planning three years out, we're gonna plan for about a year, the same way we do now. And so, to me, most of the arguments that are raised in favor of this don't hold up. Now, the last point that I think that you made is that it's somehow unfair to run for a year. And, I don't know, I mean, I think it's an unbelievable thing to be up here, and it doesn't strike me as insulting or a negative in any way to be told that I only had to contribute for a year. And I don't think that those who are elected in special elections necessarily would feel that way. Most of the people up here have said that they don't, doesn't seem to be all that expensive to run at the time we're going to be running, since we're in such a democratic area, as I said before. Most of the primaries will have happened. There won't be as huge amount of activity going on around here that will compete with us. Sure, the presidential and gubernatorial thing will be out there, but I don't see it really increasing that much. And so, I guess I just don't see, what's the unfairness of you have to run one time after a year? Why is that, why is that so bad? I haven't heard the answer to that. heard the answer to that.
Councilmember Kovar, can I ask you one question, a clarification of the point you made? When you said the $30,000 would be, but if we, I just want to understand, if we don't have the election then in 2018, that would be $30,000 we're not spending in 2018? I just want to, right, okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, $30,000 is $30,000, but in the scheme of something that happens every one or two or three years, one chunk of $30,000 just doesn't strike me as that's a basis for us making this decision.
I didn't understand when you said spread across, that's the only thing, sorry, I just wanted to clarify.
I may not have been clear about that.
No, I got it. Councilmember Mail?
Yeah, thank you. If we want to save another $30,000, we could go to five-year terms, or you could save $60,000 by going to seven-year terms, and so on, right? So that's, like, to me, when I just think of it, if it was $100,000 or $200,000, that would be a big deal. But, for example, in one of the stream restoration projects that we've got in our budget, we're spending $100,000 without touching dirt, just to plan where we'll put the stream and the rocks and the boulders and the grass when we finish it afterwards. So for me, $30,000 for an election is not, in any way, too much to spend, given how important elections are. I wanted to sort of raise a few issues. The first is one I mentioned last time, and Councilmember Kreschey, and you brought this up, the idea of worrying about slates. So city council candidates who run in 2018 will be running on what are probably primarily races that have been already completed, because candidates will have run, candidates at the state and county level will have run in competitive Democratic primaries in our area. That primary will have resolved itself, and they'll be running in a part of the county unless something dramatically changes, where the Republicans on the ballot don't have a chance to win the House seat against House Member Raskin or county council seats, et cetera. The next election, the 2020 election, is a Trump election, if, or President Pence, if he doesn't make it to four years. You know, sort of the likelihood of slates, the likelihood of more competitive races that involve partisan nature are, to me, more extreme in 2020. So that's sort of one reason to stay away from 2020 as our first time to try this. A second is just the complexity, for example, that the city clerk and the Board of Elections has talked about, that, you know, there are some challenges with implementing this, and if we implement, and we all know from the data, that governor, gubernatorial election years, 2018 being one of them, have lower turnout than presidential election years. So if we want to try this in 2018, which is a 40%, 50% turnout year as opposed to a 70% or 80% turnout year, that's a much easier context in which to get it right. So that, to me, is really one of the sort of driving things. Another is that it's about process, and it's about the referendum, and the things that I really urge my colleagues to think carefully about, which is that we actually started this discussion two years ago. So we, as a council, made a choice to go to the residents and ask their views. But we could have taken action two years ago, we could have created a three-year term, we didn't have to go out to a referendum. So we've been discussing this, making progress on this issue for two years, but what we asked the residents to weigh in on during the referendum in 2015 was, if we can accommodate our special classes of voters, should we make this change in 2018? And 75% of them said, yes, you should make this change in 2018. So we have that direction. The materials that we provided to the public associated with this charter change include that language, described what they said they wanted, what the people who voted in the referendum said they wanted by a three-to-one margin, was a change in 2018. That's what we've told them in public, that's what we've told them in meeting notices, that's indeed what we've told them we were talking about tonight. There's no language for this yet, there's no language that's been reviewed by the public that's been noticed as part of the charter process. So I'm concerned about making a change like this, which is such a dramatic change that affects the very, it's not a technical change, it's a change to the very nature of the question that we asked, we asked voters to weigh in on, that would, that would have a material effect on that question. So that, to me, is another driving reason. Councilmember Kovar mentioned the voters. Of course, we're talking about the convenience, inconvenience, cost, time, burden for, let's say, 14 candidates. Let's say every race has one opponent, and there's 14 candidates that run in 2017 and another 14 that run in 2018. That's the inconvenience and cost of those 14 people versus what we very much expect based on the information city staff have given us and other information, are the thousands of people, additional people in Tacoma Park who will vote in 2018 for city council, who won't vote for city council if they don't have that chance in 2018. They'll vote in 2020, but if past is precedent, they won't vote in 17. There'll be thousands of people who don't vote in 17, they won't get a chance in 2018. They'll be waiting. So literally, that's the trade-off for me, is thousands of people having, giving, making it easy for thousands of people to participate in the election in 2018 versus the candidates. And as somebody who's run two races with no opponent, one race with an opponent, the flip side of the coin of the, you know, asking somebody to run for one year is sort of a burden, is that a lot of these races are probably going to be uncontested because this change is not necessarily, there's no evidence that this change will make races contested by itself. So I expect a lot of races will remain uncontested in 2017 and maybe in 2018 as well. So I just don't see the cost imposition on candidates being a driving factor in making this change. And just to go back to the procedural issue for a moment, I really would want to get the, depending on the outcome of this, get the city clerk and the city attorneys' views, the deputy city manager's views, acting city manager's views, and just procedurally, given that we haven't given the public any language or advance notice on this issue, you know, where we are. Thank you.
The city attorney, you want to address that now?
Yes, I mean, the council can make amendments to the resolution at this point. And the, I mean, we can discuss the, and we should discuss the precise language that's going to go under the code or into the charter in this resolution.
So can I just ask that more specifically?
Yes, go right ahead.
So there's no legal reason that, on a charter change, council cannot change the language up to the very last moment with no written information to the public associated with the charter change?
Correct.
Councilmember Kreschey?
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to respond to my colleagues. Councilmember Kovar, you said this today, you said this last time. Even though I think you're a damn good city councilman who's going to get reelected, let's just be clear, this is not extending your term. You're going to have to put your name on the ballot in 2017 and run against somebody and win, and then it would extend you as a new council member's term, presumably if it passes. So that's one thing I just wanted to make clear. And you're going to win. And the other thing I will just say, and we could talk about this when we get beyond this discussion, but we called a referendum, it was an advisory question. I don't think that the public, the question could not cover the intricacies of how this change would happen, including that it would require a charter amendment, that it would definitely happen in 2018. It was, again, an advisory question, ensuring that as long as we can keep in play some of our special categories of voters, whether this is something that the public would support. I don't dispute with you one second that the public overwhelmingly said, yes, we want to move forward. But I think to say that because we might have used 2018 in that advisory question, and now after further deliberation and getting all this research back from the Board of Elections, that the public will deem us untrustworthy, that we are going back on our word on an advisory question, that is not persuasive to me personally. And I will say this, and this is part of, this will be part of my comments as we talk about the next step, which is, let's be clear, we want to increase voter turnout by this move, and I think it's a very noble purpose. The 76% of people who voted in 2015 are those same small group of voters that we're saying that we want to expand. So although it's compelling that 76% of the public said, yes, we want to move forward with this idea of synchronization, let's not lose sight of the fact that it's that same small group of people that we're trying to expand. So to me, the argument that going back to this being overwhelming, it doesn't hold as much weight for those reasons. But I still ask my colleagues to consider this. I think that, given the reasons that I've stated, I think that it's the more appropriate thing to do, forget cost even for a second, which, by the way, I'll note, the $30,000 figure was an estimate, it's not a concrete amount of money. It may be more than that, it may be less. And just the truncated term, I don't think that somebody, I think we complain on a daily basis about how in Congress, people get elected, and the next thing that they're worried about is getting reelected, and we're essentially putting in play for 2017 that very thing, and I don't think a new council member particularly should have to worry about that.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I'm going to support Councilmember Kreschey's amendment for some of the reasons that he cited, but I have my own additional reasons. I'm still going to vote against the whole concept of changing the charter in order to get people to come out and vote, but that's not what we're talking about right here, because it's likely that this charter amendment is, in fact, going to change, is going to be approved, and the charter will get changed. But with regard to the question that was asked by two voters in the last election, as has been pointed out, that was not a determinative question, it was simply seeking the advice of the residents, the state constitution doesn't allow us to hold those kind of referendums. The question could have, it was, the question was posed about a 2018 election. It could have just easily been posed by a 2020 election, but we'll never know because, you know, I didn't write the question, and none of us in the audience had anything to do with it. So we don't really know what it is people want. And furthermore, we spent two years or a year and a half debating it, we've come up with all kinds of findings that indicate that it's going to be a challenge to be able to pull this off in such a way that, in fact, we get more people voting, but also that we get quality elections. Because what this, I've been pointing out since this debate began, is that there's two schools of thought on this city council. There's those of us up here who are primarily interested in seeing if we can get more people to vote, and there's those of us up here who are primarily interested in seeing if we can get more candidates to run for office, and hopefully get more minority candidates to run for office. Because right now, there aren't very many on the city council, and there haven't been very many that have ever run. I'm in the second camp, and one of my concerns is that if this charter amendment gets passed, as I assume it will, it seems to me that if you have a one-year term, that's a pretty good way of sort of saying, if you're going to try it out, don't waste your time, don't take, you know, if you're going to have to go through the whole trouble, and you only get to serve if you win for one year, and you got to go through it all over again. Some people might find that to be a little bit discouraging for saying whether or not they want to throw their hat in the ring. I don't know, but I just think that it doesn't boost my confidence that we will attract more candidates to run. It's a daunting process, prospect, when you're trying to displace an incumbent, say, like any one of us up here, because no incumbents have been voted out of office in many, many, many elections. I don't, I didn't go back far enough to find one. So I just think that it would be advantageous to extend it three years. Councilmember Kreschey's comments about the challenges, the learning curve, I can tell you, as a person who studied political science in school, who worked in municipalities for many, many years in my career as a civil servant, that when you get up here on the city council, and you actually have to figure out how to run a city, and how it is run, and why it's run the way it is, and the complications of budgets and all of that, the learning curve is extraordinarily steep. And I know it took me at least two years to begin to feel comfortable. I just think it'd be a disservice to any new person on the council, regardless of their background, to limit that first term to one year. So that's why I support Mr. Kreschey's amendment.
Thank you. Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor. And I thank my colleague, Mr. Schultz, who associate myself with his comments tonight. I just, a couple of things that I wanted to, a couple of points I wanted to make. One is, I'm occasionally amazed, sitting on the dais, that people talk about an amount of money, like $30,000, and say, well, that isn't much. It's a lot to me, and I think it is a lot to many taxpayers. As I listened to Councilmember Mail's discussion, and I understand it's a significant change from one year to three years, but at the same time, I think it's merely a timing issue and not a real game changer for the, for his original proposal. So I don't think it's that big a distinction in the surveys that we did have. And lastly, I would just point out that this particular proposal, not just the change in the timing, but the change in our election scheduling, which Councilmember Mail brought forward and has advocated for and worked very hard on in many ways, and I appreciate his work on that, but it wasn't accomplished overnight. If someone's on the council, it frequently takes more than a year to actually accomplish something and get something through. So I don't see, in weighing one year versus three years, I think it's clear to me that three years makes more sense. Thank you.
Right, Councilmember Kovar and Councilmember Mail then. And Councilmember Smith, and then we're calling the vote.
I appreciate Councilmember Schultz's comments. I'm going to differ a little bit on one point that he raised. He said that there are two camps, one that wants to increase turnout and one that wants to increase candidates. I want to increase turnout in order to increase candidates, so I'm going to differ on that point. And my view is that if you want to get an opportunity for more people to run, if there's more people voting, you're more likely to have that, and you're certainly more likely to have more members of the city's various minority communities voting more. We know they are more likely to vote more in the even years. And so, as a conflating, or a conflation, if that's a word, we're not expecting the 2017 election to be an election where all the extra people are voting, and we might start to see this sort of significant sea change in how that bigger pool of voters affects our local elections. That's not going to happen in 2017. It's going to be the same type of election we always have. Then that'll kick in in either 2018 or 2020. So I think the question of the fairness of one year or not, we're not expecting that big turnout in 2017. So I don't see in any way that it's deterring people. We're trying to help more people vote so we can get additional folks elected, and we can either do that in 2018 or 2020. It's not going to happen in 2017. And I just have to say to Mr. Kreschey, yes, I don't care too much about the referendum on this point, I think we can make changes to it. But, yeah, the referendum was voted on by the same group of people who always vote. That's what we're trying to address. Now, you could say, why did those people vote that way? Wouldn't they rather just retain their power and keep voting that way every year? But they didn't. They said, no, let's bring in everybody else. So I just don't, I don't understand what that argument is, and I'll stop there.
Thank you. Councilmember Mail?
Yeah, just two points. Councilmember Simmons brought up an issue in terms of the speed at which council actions occur, and that it's not always very fast. But I'd just point out that for this one, it's the equivalent of going from a discussion that began in 2014 to not actually mattering to residents till 2020. So it's a six-year process. It's not two or three years, it's six years between the initial votes by council and it having an effect. It would be the equivalent of if last year, we started talking about having a housing reserve policy, but we said, well, a housing reserve policy, but we said, well, let's hold off and not put any money into, or let's not make any investments in housing for six years. So that's the way I view it. I'm just speaking personally. And the other thing I just wanted to say, I forgot to mention this before, is that I am not running for election in 2017 for this city council. So I have made my intent clear, Councilmember Koreshi, and although people are still surprised by it, not running 2017, not happening, won't be here. I'll be down there.
Only three minutes when you speak.
Yeah, only three minutes.
But you can't ask for more.
That's why you're dragging it out tonight.
Exactly. But, I mean, I ask my colleagues to really carefully weigh your vote on this issue, and thinking about again, the reasons that Councilmember Koreshi mentioned. Because if one of the arguments is that 10 months is too little to ask somebody to run, that there's an inconvenience, a cost, a burden for an election, if the cost of the election itself is a burden, then my colleagues who are voting for this, who vote, if they vote for this amendment, and they know themselves, and I've had conversations with people that I will keep privileged, if they plan to run in 2017, you're committing yourself to a three-year term. You're committing yourself to not leave after a year to run for one of those 2018 slots on the bigger ballot that you won't be on. You're committing yourself not to move, to not have any health issues that could prevent you from serving three years. Otherwise, if you expect already, if you know today that one of those things may come up, may well come up in your future job move, a housing change, if you know one of those things is going to come up, then you're, you know yourself, that you're already setting up a special election, which will cost the city a lot of money, inconvenience, will put a candidate, put a winning candidate into the place of having a one-year term or having an 18-month term. So I just ask folks to consider that as well, because it is a commitment for any of you who are planning to run in 2017, to serve that three-year term, to not run for a higher office or a different office, to not move, to not leave, to not have other things that you see in your immediate future that would change that. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I will be quick. First, I'm not going to support the amendment because I don't support this proposal. I think that Tacoma Park residents like us serving two-year terms, if they wanted us to serve longer than that. I would have heard about it by now, and I've never heard any resident say that, I think you guys should serve longer terms. I think a one-year term in this situation would be satisfactory. I just don't think that this referendum to change the elections to even years is going to get the results that some of my colleagues think are going to happen. Keep in mind, there are 19 municipalities in Montgomery County. There are three black elected officials. One person was appointed by their council. So since I've been on Tacoma Park's council, only two other black people have been put in municipal elected offices. And one of these municipalities is majority ethnic, and they do not have their elections all in even or all in odd. They split them up. And they have not been able to elect minority candidates. It's not the date. The date doesn't matter. It's bigger than the date. If it was the date, you would have a lot more black and minority elected officials in Montgomery County. It doesn't matter what we do at the date. But it's not going to happen. You know, when I used to put out a newsletter, I talked about this, and I think the way to change, if you want to get more people to come out and vote, is compulsory voting. It's done in Australia. Everybody is required to vote. That's the only way you're going to make these changes happen. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. Since I have not spoken my piece, and I feel like I'm probably the deciding vote tonight, I will say that after much consideration, I am voting for the amendment to change this to three years. I've spent a lot of time thinking about this. In fact, I hadn't thought about it until it came up in public comment during the public hearings. So I will say this is something that we did hear during the public hearings from not just one, but a couple of people who suggested it. But that wasn't the only reason I'm supporting it. I do think the comments that were made by my colleagues, Councilmember Koreshi, Schultz, and Simmons regarding multiple issues on the cost of the election, the burdened people, I've, since I know, have known, I have paid attention and I know my colleague is not running, again, speaking to people, encouraging them to think about running, you know, the idea of doing it for a year and then having to run again, given that this is not a full-time job, that many of us have other jobs that we work at and have families. And if you do it well and you do it right, campaigning and running an election takes a lot, a lot of time. And so, for some of the folks I've talked to, it's been kind of discouraging for them to think about running once for a one-year term and then having to run again. So this was, I see my colleagues' point about wanting to put this in place sooner and not wait till 2020, but waiting both sides. I'm going to vote for the amendment. So with that, all those in favor of the amendment put forward by Councilmember Koreshi, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Opposed.
No.
All right. That's four to three. So the motion moves forward. And now we get back to the original resolution. Are there any other comments? I know people have made some already on the resolution in general before us, before we call the vote?
Just a sort of point of order.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
At some point, we need to structure the language that we just voted on.
Oh, okay.
So that we know we're voting on when we vote on the full
Right.
Change.
So do we want to?
So whether we need to pause for that, or whether we need?
Do we need to pause for that and look at the city attorney?
I'm sorry, just to repeat, the city attorney, what I said was, we sort of need the language. Between now and whenever we vote on this whole thing, we need to see the language, or at least have most of the words.
Right there.
Can I just ask a question? I mean, as I indicated in my request with the amendment, on page two of six, if we were to, on lines 45, change the word "one year" to "three year," and change on line 46, 2018 to 2020, and make all such changes in this document consistent with that change, such that 2020 is the operative year, I think that would be the real substantive change, right?
Yeah.
I don't think we're going to have to draft a new whereas clause, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah. I just wanted, but literally, I just wanted to go through that.
Right.
What you just did. What was the second change you described?
So in that same whereas clause, on line 44 of page two of six, line 45 would be "one year" to "three year," and then on line 46, the year 2018 would be changed to 2020, with the understanding that the rest of the document would reflect this change.
Can we just say technical?
Well, I think
Yeah.
Really?
And it's a charter? I think more important is the actual language in the body of the resolution. And so that would be, on page three of six, line 38, we would change "one year" to "three And on page four of six, line 25, it starts at numbered year, and you would insert "commencing in 2020."
Numbered year commencing in 2020 and thereafter?
Yes, and remove thereafter. Or that, I'm sorry, thereafter is already removed. So just be inserting "commencing in 2020."
Is that it? All right. So that amendment passed, and now, any more conversation on the overall resolution? Councilmember Koreshi?
Thanks, Mayor. I want to thank Councilmember Mayo for not only proposing this idea, which I wasn't a part of, because I didn't, I was on the ballot with the advisory question. So I'd like to think I was voted in with that question. And also making, literally, a professor available to me from the West Coast while I was on vacation to discuss these issues. There's no question that I have struggled with this issue. As a former member of the Board of Elections, when I was running, and there were, there were actually pieces of paper asking people to support this advisory question, I'm sure the mayor probably remembers, I specifically said that at that point, I was opposed and I was not going to pass out that paper. There's no question, though, the statistics are clear, that this will increase voter turnout in Tacoma Park, period. That's the overarching pro of this issue, which I think is a very noble purpose. The cons that I have raised previously, and I'll raise again, is we have a very local, intimate election process in Tacoma Park with one polling site and several early voting sites this time around, but specific to the city and for city elections. So that local aspect will, I think, be somewhat lost. The multiple polling places versus one polling place, since we'll all be voting where we'd be voting for our congressperson. The multiple polling places for early voting. So you'd have to do early voting in city-designated areas versus early voting for state and federal. The idea of, and I ask everybody to imagine back to November of 2015, when right in front of this building, there was not an inch to put a yard sign, because we were packed to the brim with mostly city council yard signs, but others as well. The idea of sharing that with, I don't know, Jamie Raskin, or Chris Van Hollen, or whoever is a little daunting. I think that that's, that's going to be, you know, you could, you can have a reasonable fear that you might get lost in the shuffle of those very, very important people. I think, although I think we make more of an impact, but don't tell them I said that. And then the idea of not yet being at a place with the state to be on a single ballot, I think that's a problem. The idea of two lines is a problem. And I think by virtue of having multiple polling sites, it's going to be more expensive to run, ideas raised by Councilmember Schultz. So we go back to that advisory question. I think when you have all this information and you feed it to every one of those people who came and voted for the advisory question, and 76% said yes, I don't think it would be 76%, given that data. And you know, whether we've done enough as a city to look at alternatives. The mayor just said a moment ago that this is a part-time job. Really? Do you think it's a part-time job, Mayor? And not to call out my colleagues who sit up here, but it's a privilege, and Councilmember Smith raises a good point about minority candidates. I think overwhelmingly, minority candidates can't run, because they don't have the time or luxury, many of them, to do this job. They don't have the flexibility or the privilege to just do whatever that needs to be done. Take a trip out to Annapolis and attend, I can't do that. I cannot do that with my job. You know, two of the men I've learned the most with, from, on this council are retired, you know? And, but I also recognize that, and you know, maybe we don't get paid enough to do that job. Maybe that's not attracting people either. But I'm not going to give myself a pay raise. So have we tried everything? But after deliberating on all this and talking about these cons, and after talking at length with Councilmember Mayo and my colleagues, I think that the pro, the overarching importance of this, which is increasing voter turnout of various underrepresented members of our community, on its own, far outweighs some of these negatives. And I think we as a community owe it to people who don't vote on city issues, to have the opportunity to be there in a polling site and vote for their city representatives along with everybody else. So as a result, I'm going to support this charter amendment. And I'm excited about the prospect of this being a wider voter roll of people from all aspects and diverse backgrounds of our community. But I will say this, with all the cons that I've raised, I ask that if anybody who's sitting up here listening at home was on a future council and recognizes that we are losing something by going to synchronize elections, I can't think of those hypotheticals today, but not to be shy about thinking about going back to where we are today. If it doesn't work, and if it doesn't reflect our values as a community, if that's the conclusion we reached, but based on the empirical evidence and everything that my colleagues and Councilmember Mayo showed me, I think we're in for a real benefit to our community by synchronizing our elections and actually engaging those who we need to engage more. So I'll be voting in support of it.
Councilmember Schultz?
I'm not going to go into my usual diatribe about why this is not a good idea. But I will say that while we had 76% people, I think, vote for the question with the promise that we would try to keep all of these unique features of our election. And now that we have spent two years studying, or whatever it is, a year and a half studying it and finding out the complications and the uncertainties that are involved, we end up with everybody, or most people on this dais, being supremely confident that the number of votes, the number of people that will vote will go up. I'm not supremely confident that the number of people will go up, because for one thing, why would you want to stand in the second line when there's only one candidate to vote for, and you know that person, and you know that they're going to win, because they don't have any opposition or any notable opposition? So you're not going to vote. It's no point. And I think, when you have to, when you consider that you have to have two different absentee ballots, and to, go to two different places to do early voting, stand in two lines, and stuff like that, I would, I would strongly recommend that we put this up at this November election for a referendum and saying, knowing everything we know now, dear citizens, please vote and let us know if you still want to do this thing. If they, people said yes, then of course, that would be the way we would go. But I, but we're not giving anybody a chance. And it's interesting to me that when we've had public hearings on this over the last, I don't know, couple of months, had a couple times when we've had people, had a hearing on it, I think we had one person show up the last time, who said they didn't think it was a good idea. And the time before that, we may have had a couple people show up. And it's not, it's not like there's overwhelming interest at all in what we're doing. But we think we're doing the right thing, and God bless us. I hope that we are. So we'll see how it goes.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to bring up two points. One, if you look at the county's trend lines for minority voting, they're going down. And no one understands why. So for us to think that by changing our elections so that now that they're the even years, we're going to be different from what is happening in the county and the state, I just don't see how that's going to change. The second point, Montgomery County is a majority ethnic county. There are only two members of the county council that are from any ethnicity. Just two, Craig Rice and Nancy Navarro. So if there's so many minorities here that are part of this pool that can vote, then why is it not reflected in the county council? And why is it not reflected in the municipalities in Montgomery County? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to call the, oh, the city clerk has a question, yes, or a comment?
I would suggest that before you vote, you go ahead and actually make this, that we state the change in the whereas clause, because I'd rather not do it after the vote. And I think it will be unclear to someone looking at it in the future if we don't change it. It has to be changed, so.
I thought we had changed it. I'm sorry.
I thought it wasn't clear that, I thought.
I thought we had.
Well, good. It's changed?
Yeah, all right. Yes, I thought we had. Yeah. I know, it's hot and it's late. All right.
The city clerk means the whereas clause is at the bottom of page two?
Yes, yeah. I think we did, yeah. But thank you for double checking. We're trying to do this one right. This is a big deal. All right. Do you need a You need a roll call vote on this one? I think we do. This is a big deal. So, all right, go ahead, roll call. Drumroll.
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Mail.
Aye.
Councilmember Kareshi.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
No.
Councilmember Schultz.
No.
Mayor Stewart.
Aye. All right, it passes. We just changed our elections. Wow, okay. I think it was harder than giving birth. All right. All right, next, we have a consent agenda. Who would like to move that?
Mayor, before we move it, can I just add one point?
Yeah, go ahead.
With the consent agenda, I know that there's a procedural way that you can discuss each issue, but I just want to raise one thing, I'm not trying to break it up, I think we should vote on it together.
If you want to point to something, you need to pull it from the consent agenda.
Can I just make a council comment I didn't make earlier?
Yes, go ahead.
I just think that the example of using the capital improvement program to spend money on regular things in the police department, like radios, is a type of issue that we should look at moving forward as a council, as we address the police budget overall, as not being just a regular expenditure, but why is it a regular expenditure, and let's have a more robust conversation about it.
Does the acting city manager want to...
If I could just make one comment about that, I absolutely agree with your point. I think something with the radios that is important to point out, as it relates to the CIP, is single items that are included in capital improvement budgets are typically $5,000 or more, and that is actually the case with the police radios. This item for $17,000 is for three radios.
Okay. I just raised this as an example moving forward.
Yeah, pull something we want. Got it.
Nothing at all.
All right. We're moving the consent agenda. Who would like to move it?
So moved.
Councilmember Kareshi, Councilmember Siemens, second. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We need a roll call vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed a, oh, because we had the single reading ordinance, all right, yeah, sorry, apologies. Roll call.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Kareshi.
Aye.
Councilmember Mail.
No.
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Aye. Now we're ready for our guests this evening. And I think Ms. Grisby, if you're going to come down and...
Hello. We are joined tonight by Adrianne Washington, founder and CEO of NDC, the neighborhood development company that the council has signed, the city has signed a development agreement with for the Tacoma Junction project, and as well as Colin Green from Street Sense, who moderated and coordinated the community input meetings in February and March. And they have a presentation for you, and then I think expect some questions and discussion.
Great, thank you.
Good evening. No, no problem. Colin Green from Street Sense, thanks very much for the opportunity. I was worried I'd have to change the date. But I...
That's a good one.
With us, you never know.
Okay. I'm here tonight, hopefully we can keep this sort of brief and streamlined and on point. As the agenda item noted, we're here this evening to present to you, the council, the sort of findings from our surveying techniques and the information we gathered and went through with the community during our engagement process back in February and March. So I just advance with this, I imagine? Okay, great. So tonight, and we have submitted, by the way, our more full report to the city, so this will serve as sort of the basic findings as we go through. Tonight I'll be summarizing those findings from the process and highlighting the following things that are on the screen, including the overview of the process that we determined along with the advisory committee, NDC, and Street Sense together. We'll talk a little bit about the demographic findings which came out of the survey results as, oh, thank you, I'm probably going to need that, as well as the public feedback findings and the survey findings, the two separate elements. We really began these two elements, which were not necessarily the beginning or the end of any part of this discovery process and development undertaking. We did hold four meetings in February and March of this year. We had a pretty good attendance, from my respect, in terms of public meetings that happened on Thursday evenings, and then again on Sunday afternoons. We had at least 50 community members present at each of those live in-person meetings. Each of those meetings had a brief presentation, the image board kind of dot exercise, where we were really trying to glean input and feedback and solicit an understanding from community members and representatives who were at these presentations around the subject of design, and that design of the Tacoma Junction project. So that's really where we were kind of trying to drive the conversation and really listen to folks about what kinds of things could inspire them in terms of the project itself. And then I'll speak a little bit more about the online survey, which was really intended to be a follow-on to support broader outreach, folks who couldn't make it to the meetings, people who wanted to go a little bit deeper in their commenting, et cetera. So we built an online survey that was intended to mirror those in-person activities, but really provide us with even more input. I'm not going to read all of the elements on the screen, but from the planners and urban designers' perspectives, as well as future, in the development of a concept plan architects, we felt like these four categories were really important for us to listen to and to hear direct feedback on. The idea of form and character, so not style, but just sort of, what is the form of this kind of a construction? What could it support? What kinds of things can it offer to the community in really making this a place? Market and retail, what's the experience that we could generate from a project like this? The idea of access and mobility, a very important element that we wanted to ensure was capturing not just the negative, but the positive components to construction on this site. And then the idea of public realm, which includes not just the idea of parks and outdoor spaces, but really the sidewalk. How does that really convey the feeling of something that contributes to the neighborhood and its surroundings? Once we went through that process, we had handwritten notes, we had conversations. It took a lot of time, frankly, to kind of distill all of this information, and it came at us from very different ways. People speaking one-on-one, people speaking in groups, people speaking to each other, people writing things down, and then taking the online survey as well. So we documented all of that, transposing all of those handwritten notes. We categorized, and really, I'd like to use the word distilled, and started to understand those responses, rather than come up with a series of results. This is a beginning of a process, not necessarily the end. Whoop, sorry. We also did similar information. The online survey provided us with a little bit easier techniques for taking the information and categorizing them. And then we created kind of a key of summary of those key points. From the public meeting side, where we were with the attendees in both the fire station and across the hall here in the community center, we documented those results, we analyzed them for things where people could understand where things were mentioned more than one time, or mentioned emphatically, rather than just sort of looking at dots and reporting to you that there were 70 dots for this and 80 dots for that. From the online survey, it was interesting to point out, we feel like this was a pretty positive way to do the feedback, because we got over 600 completed responses. And that may not sound like a lot, but in a process like this, we felt like that was a pretty good result. So we got over 450 for the form and character. That was put up first, weeks before the other one, so it's not a shock to us that there was a lower number for the second. And just as a sort of broad statement, the most representation, we had a sort of a splash page at the beginning that asked people to explain where they lived in the city, and their age, and whether they owned or rented, and by and large, the most of the respondents were homeowners, shop, and frequent Tacoma Junction area, or between 36 and 64, and represented mostly wards one, two, and three, which is basically where the site is located. In order to create the summary, so what you'll see coming in a few more slides is that when we sorted that data and sought really recurring responses, those were the kinds of things that if a person said something really great, we recorded it, but if five or six people said that same kind of thing, we really took that in as a way that is expressive of more than one person, and maybe something that we can thread together as a true community response. From the photo side, anything that had a greater than 60% positive or negative response, well, the 60% positive was seen as a real statement that said that this was something that people at least felt like something that might fit into Tacoma Junction, or something that they would like to see. Or nine or more green dots, that's where we topped out in terms of those. So again, we recorded that and presented it. It doesn't mean that just because something has 60% positive and nine green dots means that's what will arrive on the site. We forwarded that complete, the complete results to the city. And again, I wanted to note that the results of this kind of an exercise are important in informing the team, not making a specific decision about how the place will be designed. So I'll go through these kind of quickly, but in terms of the positive statements about form and character, you know, the architecture, if you will, or the form of the building, and how it responds to the fact that it's in Tacoma Park and not somewhere else in the landscape. We got high ratings for things like brick buildings, green roofs, outdoor seating. We did get negative responses, which we wanted to talk about, that people didn't want to see really big boxy buildings that were very modern in their form. We heard things that weren't real specific to architectural design, but by forming the shape of buildings and where they're disposed on the site, understanding an idea about protection from road noise, and a connection from the outside to the inside of the building was very important. And there were others, about things like working space, things that were too trendy or corporate. People really started to try to express what it means to be a building that contributes to Tacoma Park versus other places. This was one of the images that got a whole bunch of green dots on it. It's actually in Charlottesville. But this is the kind of information that as designers, we sort of borrow from some of these things. This is not a plan to what will be designed on the site, but this is something that people tended, that tended to resonate with the people that took the survey or were at the meetings. Traditional architecture tended to score higher than more modern types. We heard over and over again, things like relaxed, or cozy, or intimate spaces, that it be comfortable, that people in Tacoma Park have a particular lifestyle vision, and it needs to be reflected in some way, shape, or form in this new development. And they talked about the difference between just a straightforward box with retail space in it, to things that are well-lit, things that are inviting, things that may have outdoor space as part of their program. From the access and mobility side, the second half, if you will, of the public feedback session included access and mobility, and then public realm. And access and mobility wasn't just about how do we improve the streetscape. We also included discussions about how this site is very constrained, and it's not particularly easy to provide a lot of extras, given the constraints of the site, given where it is, given the configurations of the intersections, as well as all of the functional issues that need to be considered when talking about the neighboring sites, truck traffic, deliveries, service, et cetera. So it was very complex. Some of the things that came out of the surveying and the meeting areas were along the lines of pure design. People love the idea that there are bike lanes and it's a bikable place. However, we need to make sure that they're continued, we need to make sure that they're safe, we need to make sure that they're clear to bike riders and drivers about how to use them. Things that you already have could be amped up a little bit. People spoke about the bus stop, or there were several bus stops in the area, but in particular, if there's one right there, could it be something that's a little bit elevated from the others, to reflect that idea about how this site gets used? Clearly, the loading areas, the idea of the lay-by lane, all of those elements were very important to us to hear how people reflect them. Those were some of the ones that had the most sort of negative responses, but from out of that, understanding what is negative about them. People had questions about safety, how does this operate with a sidewalk right next to it, that there be divisions, clear separation between pedestrian activity, loading activity. So those were some of the things that it's not just about what do people all want and get behind, but what are the concerns? So we've distilled that information as well. And then from the public realm space portion, we really learned that people definitely in Tacoma Park love their open space, and they understand open space is delivered in a variety of forms. It's not always ballfields and parks at the large scale, but it comes down in Tacoma Park, which is an urban condition, to the streetscape. People love the streetscape, especially when it's done well. So on this project, we really need to be careful about how that gets designed. So in addition to the public gathering space, and public art, and all of those things that Tacoma Park is very well-known for, there needs to be a clear understanding of how to affect a contributing streetscape, wide sidewalks, benches, lots of greenery. So those are all, that's a lot of things to try to compress into a site, but those are really good design hints, if you will, to a team like ours who is responsible for sort of delivering something that people can get behind. And so, once we finished that portion, we also asked people in the survey, you know, about building use, and about what would be a group of tenant types that you would use if you were here. Because one of the things that we want to make sure we're delivering is not just a beautiful building, or an effective way to handle transportation, but something that people will actually use, and therefore the place would be vibrant, to the extent that people want it to be vibrant, at the proper hours, with the right kind of controls, et cetera. And some of that came down to the question of, well, if something was here, would you use it? In the first survey, these were the uses that people continued to mark down, food and beverage, a pharmacy, a bookstore, art supplies, a bakery, even a gym. So those were some of the things that people feel aren't necessarily missing, but if they were at this site, they feel like they would use them. Survey two, people were a little more streamlined, but you'll see that they were referencing some of the same kinds of things that, to them, made a neighborhood a neighborhood, things that you can have close by, that you can walk to, and that you can feel comfortable in. I want to make it, again, very clear that there is a process moving forward from this, and so instead of proposing that these are the results of all of the community engagement, there are lots more opportunities for community input. Again, we tried to, working with the advisory committee and with city staff, tried to establish something that was focused on the design elements. There are a lot more elements that need to be discussed. And these six or so different parts of the process that will follow on are definitely places that we expect to start showing things that can be reacted to, rather than elements that are somewhat generic to be responded to, including council review of a concept plan yet to be developed, and all of the other necessary agency-driven and public forum type of activities that a project like this would be required to go through. So I want to just take a minute to say thank you. It was an experience for me to be, to see so much community involvement. I'm not foreign to it, but it's always nice to see a city that really cares. And from the number of people that responded, and the number of people that really came out to these meetings, and then did the surveying and talked to us one-on-one, it's very true that people care about their neighborhood, and our hope is to deliver something that helps them care about it even more. So happy to answer questions on this topic.
Great, thank you. Any councilmembers have any questions? Hello? Councilmember Mail?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation, thanks for the meetings, which were great engagements.
Thanks for the meetings, which were great engagements. I just wanted to connect your presentation with a comment that was received during the public comment process, which is that, I'll speak for myself personally, for me, that kind of sticky-dot exercise, looking at pictures, responding to this versus that, works. It works on figuring out what colors to paint my house, and it works, you know, in the context that you described. It makes it real for me, and I, and I, I see visually, I learn and I process things visually, and so it's a very visual way to focus. But I get that for other people, a long narrative explanation, or blueprint, or there's different, there's different styles of learning, adaptation, and sort of internal decision-making to evaluate wants and needs and dislikes. So I get for some people, that process wouldn't have worked. So I just wanted to sort of acknowledge that, but really appreciate the amount of work that you put into the process and the kind of engagement I saw your staff make to elicit the detailed narrative feedback from people who were putting dots up on the wall, or in the space you created in the online survey. I got lots of positive feedback from folks who felt like that they got a chance to not just put a binary response, but also to give the narrative. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'd just like to echo what Councilmember Mel said. As somebody who has a profession, designs surveys and things of research, I appreciated very much the online survey. And in fact, it was really, I will admit, we did the first one, we didn't do the second one, because the first one was a little bit more fun. But having, doing it with my family, and everybody taking part in it and spurring conversations, and seeing how even as four people who live in the city, we have different, we had differing views of what we liked and disliked, but were able to find the space and express that in the survey. So, thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
Thank you for this presentation. It's really interesting, and the process. I attended one of the four meetings, and I did not participate in the survey purposefully because I feel like I already have all the influence that everybody in the community can tolerate from up here. I don't need to be adding to it on the survey. My question is, where you are now, when, looking forward, when do you get to the point where you're going to really seriously be contemplating the types of tenants, terms of the, you know, the, the types of businesses, the types of retail businesses that, that you want there? And, and start figuring out how to go after, I mean, can you elaborate a little bit? Do you kind of like pick, find, sort of say, we want the XYZ type of restaurant, and we're going to go look for, go talk to them? Or do you kind of, do you invite, let people know that this is happening, and we got X number of square feet of space, if you're interested, et cetera, et cetera? How does that work, and when do you think that process will start?
I'll, I'll answer the second part sort of first, and, and Street Sense is involved in a variety of retail parts of business, if you will. I represent the design and, and architecture and planning side, but we also focus on retail strategy. And so I'll answer a little bit from what I've learned from my colleagues at our office, which is that the answer to your question is kind of all of the above, in terms of how we advise clients to seek out tenants. We start with research that helps us understand sort of the fabric of the community and what might work in those places, based on some tried and true elements, things about population, and how many households there are, and income, and all of those things that you probably hear about how retailers kind of make decisions about where to locate. And we also look at what's on the ground today, you know, what's the competition, who's around, what kind of space we're going to supply? Is it the type of space that is very unique and very highly sort of designed, which may or may not appeal to a broad category of different retailers? At the end of the day, my goal on that part of the team is to make sure that these are the kinds of tenants that really start to create that vibrancy that is there. That doesn't necessarily mean noise, it doesn't necessarily mean activity at all hours, but...
You're sort of talking about synergism, where they, they build on each other and support each other?
They do, and, and there are components of that as well. Some tenants are looking to who else is, is interested in this kind of space, and there is a co-tenancy factor, an idea that people do better in groups. It's similar theories, whether it's a main street or a mall type of format. At the same time, we also are, have been working with NDC for a while on, on thinking about these things, because there is a cart before the horse sort of scenario. It's, it's very rare that we will sort of design a building and then open it up for rent. Typically don't work that way, never worked that way, especially if we're involved in kind of both ends of that, of that part of the project. We have been working for, for months really, with the NDC team to, to do everything from simple brainstorming, what do we think would work here, to doing more research from people who are very invested in the, I'll call it the Washington market, which is actually not huge, who are out making brokerage deals daily. They know who is looking for space, they know what kinds of places are working well, and they know what they're looking for in a neighborhood location, or any of the other elements that we have. So we tend to look at the answer to that question through the lens of both the retailer and the neighborhood. And at times, those are in conflict, and at times, they work in a very synergistic manner. So I'd rather have probably NDC answer the question about sort of exactly what the timing is, and those kinds of things, but we think about it as we draw all the way through to understand the types, the needs, and at the end of the day, the economics of how those things will pan out as well.
Well, let me just ask then, if I knew of a business, and I don't, but if I know of a business that I know would be just really overjoyed to be able to be locating there, do I just point them in, in Street Sense's and NDC's direction?
Absolutely, sure. Right? Yes.
I thought that's what would be the answer.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. You know, you guys are the wizards of retail in the region, so it, it's nice that you guys are on this project. Can you tell me, Walter Reed is in their first phase of development. Do you see that being advantageous to this project, or will it be any type of competition? One. Two, you talked about comparable neighborhoods. DC is seeing this, you know, renaissance. They're, they're making new neighborhoods out of areas that most people never wanted to go, right? For example, the Ballpark District. How would you compare what you're doing on this project to some of the things that are happening in DC? Because, you know, we want this to be like this catalyst for other projects to happen, right? And, and as you guys look at it, what do you see happening? And then finally, are you guys talking to, has, has NDC retained your brokerage side to handle this project? One. Two, are you guys putting out any alerts to brokers about the potential of this project?
Three good questions. Number one, from the project happening at Walter Reed, and whether or not that represents a competitive market that will help drive or steer people away from Tacoma Junction. I think there, from what I have seen, and it remains to be seen, how that project progresses. We need to know who their tenants really are going to be, while there's reporting every day on who they're going to be until, as you well know, there's a lease signed. It's not, it's not a slam dunk. But in general, I think that that project is at a very large scale, and I think that the Tacoma Junction project and environment is at a different scale, and that's not a better or worse. It's a very different kind of an environment to think about what kinds of uses would be arranged on a very small site in a row that's fairly limited on the intersection that we all know and love, versus something that has quite a bit of exposure and firepower behind it, expectations, and multiple layers of development in addition to the retail that are happening. So new households, new, new people.
Office.
Right, and a lot of different uses on that site. So I would say, no, we don't see them as competitive because they're so different. One of my colleagues will tell you, everything is, is competition, but this is a very special and unique site, and it resonates well in this room, I know, but the city of Tacoma Park is a very special and different place. And so this is one that requires a little bit more focus, almost not with blinders on, but with an understanding, sort of a razor focus on, on what is possible here. So short answer is not really, but it does remain to be seen. We're keeping an eye on all of these different places. The second one you brought up, I have, I have my own answer for this, in terms of the areas in Washington that are receiving this sort of new renaissance of neighborhoodism. And as a planner, we get kind of excited about that. Places that were, on the one hand, just call it blighted, and now they're becoming the place to live. But that's very different than Tacoma Park and Tacoma Junction, because in some ways, those places are actually easier to look at, because there's not the care for those neighborhoods from the people who live there, or there aren't people living there anymore. So you're sort of inventing this neighborhood, right, in a place that may have great building stock and may have people nearby, but it's kind of easy to say, this is what we're going to put here, because there aren't people living right there right now. So there, a next generation of residents will become the formation of that. We recognize the same thing when we went through Clarendon, that all of a sudden, with all of the new development in the center, those were now the constituency, not the people living in the edges. So it, it changes, and it re-formates. Some of those neighborhoods simply weren't there 10 years ago. They were there 50 years ago, but they weren't there 10 years ago. So in some ways, those places are a little easier, because people want things done, they want to see things happen, they want to see change, and anything is recognized as a positive. But the jury is out on how that will continue to, to lay. In terms of the brokerage side, we've worked with our in-house retail strategy team with NDC to get to a point where we could understand what the kind of likely tenant pool is, but at this point, we're not, without a, without sort of beginning that concept plan, we're not looking at, we have this site and we're starting to release brokers to, to, to look around. We're always ear to the ground, and have, have communicated back and forth about who we think, as, as Councilman Schultz said, if we know of somebody, we've talked that thing up, but it hasn't become formalized at this point.
And then you guys did the Arts District on Baltimore Avenue.
Hyattsville.
Yes.
Yes.
Did you expect that to be the catalyst that it has become? Because you have the Whole Foods going in, you have College Park having this new development, their conference center. Did you guys, when you originally were doing that, because I'll be honest, I did not think it was going to be that successful, because there, it's not near transportation metro, and that whole, you guys basically created a little mini-city. I mean, you got rid of all those little car lots and whatever that was there, and, and put this mixed-use project. Did you think that all these other pieces would creep up?
It's a really good question to anybody but myself who's been at Street Sense for the last two and a half years, but, but, but I will say that, and I won't take credit for it, but when you go into some of these places that are in need, and really need a spark, and you get excellent coordination with a multitude of players, the city, the neighborhoods, and you do good design and good work, and also, I think, and this is important for Tacoma Park and Tacoma Junction, sort of understand what is a neighborhood draw versus what is a regional draw?
Right.
And, and Hyattsville, to, you know, to a lot of people, is their downtown, you know, it's, it's where they go and where they live, but it also attracts people from outside, because it is a success story, and it does have things that are unique and different that they might not find in every crossroads as you go around the map. So I can't take credit for it, but it, we all, we're always hoping for that. That's a great story to have, and, and I would hope for the same in a, in a project here, that it delivers on its ability to, to reinforce neighborhood pride, to be something that's beneficial to the community on a broad scale, and be something that we're all proud of at the end. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for my colleagues tonight? Anything else? No? Are we done? Ms. Genski, do you have anything else you want to talk to us about, or? No? Good? All right? You're good? All right, well, it's before 11 o'clock. We'll let you go home, and get home before midnight, hopefully. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.